All right.
All right.
Let's call this meeting to order at 4:45. Looks like we don't have any public. So I'm assuming we don't have any comments from the public, so we are going to adjourn to closed session.
See you at six.
All right, we're all here, so we are going to reconvene. And we will start with the adoption and approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I'll move to agenda.
I can.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, Ellen, did you want to say something to start us off?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work that Brian DeFor and Rachel Bushman did in finding and securing vaccinations for our people. I know a lot of us wrote letters to congressmen and all over the place, seeing if we could get it, and they really pulled it through, and I just want to acknowledge it publicly and thank them for such a great job.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for saying that, Ellen. All right, so we are going to move on to special recognitions, reports, and presentations. Students of the semester from Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley, students of the month for February and March, for Petaluma Junior, Kenilworth, Casa Grande, and Petaluma High. We are going to start with the February students of the month. Kenilworth Junior High School, Samantha Katania and Evan Winsler. I'm so sorry if I mess up your last names, guys.
All right, Joanna, did you say we're starting with the Kenilworth?
Yeah, with the February 2021 students of the month from Kenilworth.
Okay.
I'm just going in order on the on the agenda.
Do you want to?
Do you have a different order, Ashley?
But do you want to do all the Kenilworths in so that they're not coming back? Because I think you have them for.
I had spoken with Ashley about that earlier, whatever is easiest for her.
I can do either way. I just had Mary Collins first on my list, but I can.
Me too.
Oh, you do?
Okay, but does that work, Ashley, if we just if we keep the speaker there through it?
Yeah, either, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want, what would you like to start with Joanna again, Kenilworth or?
If you have Cherry Valley first, that's fine. I see that you have the parent pulled up already, so. Okay, so Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley, Sadie Goldberg, and Elahou Rodriguez.
I'm not actually finding students. Hold on.
Amy, do we know who the student is we're looking for?
Well, we're looking for Mira Middleton and Wes Gruner. They are.
Wes is on.
Wes is one of our presenters, and Mira is one of our presenters. We should have Sadie and Elahou Rodriguez, Sadie Goldberg and Elahou Rodriguez.
There we go. I don't see Sadie herself, though.
It could be under Daly. Kirsten Daly is her mom's name. If she's on her mom, you might see that name. Kirsten Daly. There she is, yeah.
Okay, everybody's on, so whoever is going first, go for it.
All right, Mira, Wes, you guys might need to unmute yourselves.
Okay, I can go first. Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Mira Middleton, and I'm here to present one of Mary Collins School's wonderful students of semester, Sadie Goldberg. Sadie has attended Cherry Valley at Mary Collins since kindergarten. Ever since she was young, Sadie was a dedicated and hardworking student. Besides learning, Sadie is passionate about many activities such as surfing, skating, playing soccer and lacrosse, writing, reading, and cooking. Sadie is described as an intelligent, kind, engaged, responsible, mature, thoughtful, and compassionate person. Her friends agree that she is an amazing friend and enjoyable person to be around. I could go on about how amazing she is, but sadly, we don't have enough time. Sadie is resilient. Sadie is a resilient, compassionate learner and friend. She is as kind as she is hardworking, and you can always rely on her to be there for you and help you, says Beatrice, one of Sadie's friends. Sadie, along with several of the girls from Cherry Valley, started a club called Hope from the Ashes, a group dedicated to spreading climate awareness and to raising money to donate to organizations, helping to stop the early California wildfires. Wildfires. Sadie played a big role in helping to raise money to this group. Sadie is an amazing, smart, engaged, responsible student. In addition to her academic gifts, she is kind, compassionate, and wants to make the world a better place. She is gifts to all who know her, says Mr. Adele, one of Sadie's teachers. Sadie is planning on attending Petaluma High. She will be taking honors English and math. In addition to that, hopes to try out for the soccer and lacrosse teams there. After high school, Sadie hopes to continue to make the world a better place. I feel so lucky to be one of Sadie's close friends. She is so deserving of this world. Congratulations, Sadie.
All right. Hi, my name is Wes Gruner, and I'm proud to present Elia Rodriguez as one of our Mary Collins School's students of the semester. Elia has been a student here since sixth grade. Before that, he attended River Montessori. Elia is funny, is a funny, creative student with good grades. Some of his interests include skating, surfing, and playing video games. Elia's friends describe him as funny, kind, smart, and caring. They really enjoy hanging out with him. He is known to brighten up the mood wherever he goes. Elia is a serious. Mr. Watt says, Elia is a serious and driven student, always willing to ask a question for clarification and take that information and turn it into action. Mr. Watt was Elia's sixth-grade accelerated math and science teacher. Mr. Yu says that Elia is dependable, thoughtful, and consistent both as a friend and as a student. His work displays creativity, maturity, and a strong grasp of the interconnectedness of disciplines. Mr. Yu teaches him science and English. Elia is a valuable member of our community. He is well-liked and respected by his peers, says Mr. Adele, his history teacher. Elia plans to attend Petaluma High School, where he would like to study auto engineering. After high school, Elia plans to continue studying automotive engineering and continue visiting his family in Mexico. Elia is a great friend to me, and he's gotten me through some tough times. He is a great learner and a hard worker. I expect him to excel in school and do really well in the future.
Congratulations. That was sweet. I love how their friends were presenting to them.
Congratulations, guys. Well done. Well deserved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. All right, so let's bring up the February 2021 Kenilworth students of the month.
Is it for Petaluma Junior High? Oh, sorry, I again have my.
It's okay.
I meant to switch it.
Who do we have up right now?
Right now, we have.
Be flexible.
February's Petaluma Junior, February, Lolly Goodman and Wyatt Twymon. I'm sorry.
Okay, if you're ready, we can start with them.
Okay, my name's Katiana. I'm saying Laili Goodman, student of the month. Petaluma Junior High School is very excited to present Laili Goodman as one of our February 2021 students of the month. Laili was born on May 18, 2007. She's an excellent and very active student and musician who has maintained a positive attitude through a year of distance learning. She has been a wonderful asset at Petaluma Junior High for both years, and we are proud to pass her on to the high school next fall. Laili is a hard-working student who has a passion for learning. She maintains straight A's in rigorous classes, has a very strong worth ethic, and she is always ready to help others who need it. Her math teacher says, Laili is a student who participates completely in class, asks questions, volunteers, and leads her group in discussion. She is an asset to the class. Her music teacher enthusiastically adds, Laili Goodman is hands down one of the top players in the eighth-grade symphonic band. She is one of the hardest-working students I have and is always the first to complete and turn in an assignment. In addition to being an incredible flute player, last fall, she picked up the tenor saxophone to play in the jazz band, and she's all over that, too. She has an extremely bright future on whatever career path she pursues. Laili is currently a member of the PJHS Music Cohort and enjoys coming to school to play music with her friends. To Laili, school is a world full of opportunities. She is the president of the Climate Action Club and one of its founding members. Together, the group is working on projects that will help spread awareness about the climate crisis and is working working on upcoming projects to help Petaluma and the planet. She is also an avid member of the PJHS Book Club and loves helping out in the library when possible. In addition, she is an active in her church youth group. Our young lady looks forward to mastering both Spanish and French. Laili plans on pursuing a career as an ER nurse and wants to eventually live in New York City. Her parents add, we are very proud of Laili. She has maintained a positive attitude this year. Despite the challenges presented by distance learning, she truly cares about her education and wants to do well. No matter what challenges she may encounter, she is a wonderful big sister to her two younger siblings and a loving, thoughtful friend. Before COVID, she was a sought-after babysitter in our neighborhood and a member of the PJHS wrestling team. She has a zest for life, is curious and kind, and loves learning new things. We couldn't be prouder. We agree. Laili Goodman is one of our students who stands out as an excellent role model. We are proud to honor her with the title of student of the month.
Okay, next up, Wyatt Twymon.
Hello, my name is Kira Jones, and I'm going to be presenting Wyatt Twymon. We are honored to present Wyatt Twymon as one of our February 2021 students of the month. Wyatt was born right here in Petaluma on October 5, 2006. He is an excellent, he is an all-around excellent student, athlete, and one of who always maintains a good attitude, even through difficult changes. Wyatt enjoys school and earns good grades. His math teacher comments, Wyatt is a bright, wisecult student with a talent for both intuitive and intellectual thinking. He is friendly, kind, and accepting to all his fellow students. And his PE teacher expresses his appreciation of Wyatt with. Wyatt is a consistent participator in class and often speaks up and contributes to his class discussions and activities. As an athlete, Wyatt is strong, dedicated, and focused. Sports is his primary love, and he looks forward to getting back on the field and improving his baseball skills. He also enjoys football, wrestling, and basketball. Wyatt has became an expert in the stats and highlights of professional basketball and football. Last year, Wyatt was a valued member of the PJHS Wrestling Team, and he was disappointed to be unable to compete this year due to COVID-19. He enjoys bowling, bike riding with his family, board games, and listening to all types of music and is pleased with his collection of Pokemon cards, which he inherited from his older brother. Creativity is a big part of Wyatt's makeup. One of his favorite experiences was participating in the Earth Day Fair at River Montessori. He and the other students made environmental-friendly items which sold at the fair when they learned about business practices. One year, Wyatt made products out of wood, such as birdhouses, tic-tac-toe games, and wooden dice. He called it Wyatt's Wooden Wonders. Another year, Wyatt made a Wheel of Fortune as a fair booth game. He also enjoyed participating in the school science fair where he and his friend created a work speaker. At the sixth-grade promotion ceremony, Wyatt presented a motivational speech. He also enjoyed being a class mentor. Wyatt looks forward to continued success in school, improving his basketball skills, and traveling abroad. He is unassuming and proud to learn that his genetic makeup includes a splash of Nigerian. His parents add, Wyatt is one of the smartest and funniest people we know. We appreciate the way Wyatt's mind works. Plus, he is really enjoyable to be around. He is very thoughtful and considerate of others. He has an ability to think outside the box, which results in original and clever ideas. Wyatt is very athletic as well and excels in most sports. He also has a big passion for music and is a great dancer. We are honored to be his parents and are very proud of him. Wyatt Twymon is one of those students who makes the world smile when they see him. He is a healthy, happy young man who shares his joy of life with others, both at school and in the community. We are proud to have Wyatt present Petaluma Junior High School's school as a student of the month.
Those were excellent. Thank you. Congratulations to both of you. So, Ashley, do you want to move on to February Kenilworth? Is that what you have pulled up next?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, so whenever you guys are ready, we have Samantha Katania and Evan Winsler.
Michelle, do you want to present first?
I only have the March student of the month, so.
Oh, we're doing, we're doing February first.
I know, I don't have that one. Sorry.
Ashley, do you know who's presenting for February?
I'm.
Is it Drew?
I'm for March.
Well, I have three presenters up. I think it's Kira Smith for February.
Mr. O, do you have those up? Do you want to go ahead and read? Yeah, so we'll take care of February.
Awesome, thanks.
I do. I'll pull up the February here. For February, student of the month, Kenilworth is proud to introduce Evan Winsler. Evan was chosen student of the month because he is an outstanding student, a gifted artist, and a talented musician. Evan has maintained a 4.0 grade point average his entire time as a Kenilworth student, excelling during both in-person and distance learning. Quote, "Hardworking, kind, respectful, and intelligent," end quote are just a few of the superlatives that Evan's teachers use to describe this multi-talented young man. Mr. Ryder, Evan's math teacher, shared, Evan is a great student. Evan is always early to class with a smile and ready to work. All of Evan's work is amazing. I wish I had more students like him. Evan's design lab teacher, the first semester, Ms. Bradley, enthusiastically added, Evan was always a pleasure to have in class. Evan was focused on his work, eager to learn new digital skills, and consistent in turning in top-quality work. Evan did some very creative and quality-to-work in design lab, including three modeling designs and an intriguing Google Earth tour of Star Wars filming locations. Evan's creative talents are not just limited to the digital world. Ms. Hopkins, Evan's band teacher, shared that Evan is a great trumpet player and continues to improve each day. Ms. Tillinghast, Evan's art teacher, was also eager to share that Evan is a gifted and talented art student. He draws exceptionally well for his age. Evan is amazing. When Evan is not in school, he's an avid reader who also enjoys camping and swimming. Evan is also a dedicated member of the Boy Scouts of America. He currently holds the rank of first class and would like to eventually earn the honor of Eagle Scout. After high school, Evan would like to further his education, possibly at Sonoma State, and continue to study music and video game designs. We at Kenilworth are confident that Evan will continue to excel in whatever he pursues. Congratulations, Evan. For February 2021, Kenilworth is also proud to introduce Samantha, Samantha Katiana. Samantha was chosen student of the month because she has demonstrated academic excellence and exemplary citizenship her entire time at Kenilworth. Samantha's academic performance during distance learning has been an inspiration to both her teachers and peers. While being one of only a small group of eighth-grade students enrolled in a zero-period class, amazingly Samantha earned seven A-plus grades the first semester of this year. Samantha's teachers were universal in their praise of this impressive young lady. Ms. Chavez, Samantha's advanced English teacher in both seventh and eighth grade, was eager to share that Samantha is the kind of student who makes me love teaching. Samantha is a strong writer who goes beyond expectations every time. She is kind and encouraging towards her classmates and a pleasure to have in class. Mr. Russo, Samantha's PE teacher, shared that she is one of my best students. She performs at the highest level, both physically and academically, all with a smile on her face. She has maintained an A-plus the entire school year. I could not ask for anything more from a student. Samantha has also been a valuable member of her yearbook class. Mrs. Romano added that Samantha is kind, considerate, and extremely bright. Her work ethic is extremely strong in that she is willing to do a task over and over again to achieve perfection. Samantha is always the first one to raise her hand and offer suggestions or to lend a helping hand to another student. Not only is Samantha an outstanding student, but she is also a hard-working and dedicated athlete. Samantha has been playing soccer and softball for six years and would like to continue playing softball in high school for Casa Grande. She is particularly proud of the hard work and improvement that she has made as a softball player, which earned her a roster spot on the competitive AAUW team up in the air. After high school, Samantha would like to attend a university, possibly UC Davis or Sonoma State, and perhaps pursue a career as a teacher or an author. We at Kenilworth are very proud to call Samantha one of our own. Congratulations, Samantha.
All right, thank you, Mr. O, for stepping in and reading those. Congratulations, Evan and Samantha. I see Drew and Michelle here for March. I don't know, is it too much to skip around, Ashley, and go ahead and do March? Are those students here for the March Kenilworth? Okay, so it's Isabel and Ethan. All right, so go ahead, Drew and Michelle.
Okay, hi, my name is Drew Bugby from Kenilworth Junior High, and I will be presenting the March student of the month, Ethan Chapin. Ethan was chosen student of the month because he is one of our most outstanding students, a talented musician, and an important member of our leadership class. Ethan has excelled both in-person and during distance learning while a student at Kenilworth. Ethan earned an amazing seven A-pluses in the first semester this year. Ethan's teachers have been nothing short of amazed by his performance this year. Mr. Kuntua, Ethan's history teacher, shared, Ethan has been a pleasure to have in class. He is an asset to the class discussions, and I can always depend on Ethan to turn in excellent work. Ms. Chavez added, Ethan's advanced English teacher enthusiastically added, Ethan is an excellent student who has always put his best effort into everything he does. Ethan is kind, compassionate, and has a positive attitude. I really enjoy having Ethan in my class, and he's a good role model for other students. Ms. Hopkins, who has Ethan in her leadership and intermediate band class, was eager to share, Ethan is a conscientious student that always strives to do his best. He is a great leader in the Associated Student Body class at Kenilworth. Ethan was chosen the class secretary and is responsible for taking very important notes during leadership meetings. Ethan is also a wonderful alto saxophone player and an important part of Kenilworth Band Program. When Ethan is not at school, he enjoys connecting with his family, who are spread out throughout the country, for Zoom game nights. Ethan is also looking forward to playing football for Casa Grande High School in the fall. After high school, Ethan would like to attend a university in the Bay Area and pursue a career as an orthodontist. All of us at Kenilworth are very proud of Ethan and wish him nothing but success in the future. Congratulations, Ethan.
Kenilworth Junior High's proud to introduce our March student of the month, Isabel Gagorian. Isabel has been chosen to be student of the month because she's excelled academically at Kenilworth, and her positive and cheerful attitude has been a bright ray of light for her classmates and teachers during distance learning. Isabel maintained a 4.0 grade point average her entire time at Kenilworth. She earned an impressive six A-plus grades at the first semester. Isabel's hard work and personality has not gone unnoticed by her teachers, who were eager to sing Isabel's praises. Isabel's advanced English teacher, Ms. Chavez, was eager to share it's a pleasure having Isabel as a student. Isabel is a wonderful student who is kind, thoughtful, and she is a fantastic writer. Isabel has expressed she cares deeply about social justice issues, expressed equality for all. I am so proud of her. Isabel has been proven to be a valuable member of Ms. Romano's yearbook class. Ms. Romano added, Isabel is a lovely young lady who can make, you can feel when you walk in the room. Isabel is a full package. She is committed to being an extraordinarily successful student. She goes above and beyond teachers' expectations, whether the time is large or small. Isabel puts the same amount of diligent effort into its completion. Her work ethic is strong. She makes sure that not every, that every project is handed out and tested accurately and thoroughly. When Isabel is not in school, she enjoys swimming, reading, painting, and playing soccer. Isabel's been playing soccer competitively for seven years, and she still remembers the thrill of seeing her score on her first goal when she was seven years old. Isabel likes to continue playing soccer in high school for Casa Grande. After high school, Isabel would like to attend Stanford University and study English, art, history, and design, then possibly pursue a career in teaching or interior design. Those who have a pleasure of working with Isabel know the bright future ahead. Congratulations, Isabel.
Thank you all for your flexibility. Congratulations to our students from Kenilworth. So we're going to go back to February students of the month. From Casa Grande High School, Ashlyn Steves in O'Dallas, Pacheco Garcia. From Costa Grande High School, Ashlyn Steves in O'Dallas, Pacheco Garcia.
Just looking for one of the students. I'm not seeing Marcelli, the presenter, or Charlie on here, Dan.
Do you have the write-ups, Dan? Or should we wait for those guys? You do? Okay. So we have Ashlyn Steves, who I believe this is her second time being the Student of the Month. Is that right? Yeah, all right. Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Ashlyn Steves. Ashlyn has always held herself to the highest standards. Her teachers, coaches, and peers will all say that Ashlyn's dedication to both academics and athletics are nothing short of admirable. Outside of school, she is a varsity athlete in both soccer and track. She exudes hard work, always pushing herself to her highest potential. Ashlyn's true love is art. Having always had a creative side, Ashlyn has been in Casa's 3D Make program for three years and plans to major in design or interior architecture in college because of it. Ashlyn values giving back to her community and has coached for Petaluma Youth Soccer League for years. She's always willing to lend a hand when our neighbors are in need, and she is devoted to show her gratitude to the hometown that made her into the successful young woman she is today. Congratulations, Ashlyn.
Dan, do you think O'Dallas could potentially be under Johnny Garcia? That's what I'm wondering about you.
I'm gonna guess no.
I don't know that he's here, then. Do we want, do we want to present on him if he's not here? Do we want to, do we hold off? I don't know, in Zoom?
And we can bring him back next time. Michelle, do you mind making a note of that? We can add him to the next time we have Students of the Month.
Will do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, Ashlyn. Thanks, Dan. All right, next up, Petaluma High School, Tess Flesser and Samantha Gambonini.
All right, hi, everyone. I'll be reading for Tess and Samantha. They are both Students of the Month for February, so we'll start with Samantha. Samantha Gambonini is a senior at Petaluma High School, where she has been greatly involved in advanced placement and honors classes at the Petaluma FFA Organization. She currently serves as the Petaluma FFA Secretary and has expanded her agriculture leadership service as the North Coast Region FFA President. Outside of school, she is a competitive Irish dancer with the Keenan School of Irish Dance and has been dancing since the age of 10 years old. Samantha has been raising and breeding Holstein and Jersey dairy cattle since she was the young age of three, and her herd has expanded greatly. She shows her dairy cattle at the local and even national level, all the way from Sonoma County to Canada. She is also serving as this year's Sonoma Valley 4-H Vice President and the Redwood Empire Junior Holstein Association President. Lastly, she has completed many hours of community service, mainly serving at the Las Plazadas Sonoma County 4-H Camp. Samantha Gambonini says that without the support and help from her teachers, counselors, and friends, she would not be where she is today. She hopes to attend University of Idaho, Texas Tech University, UC Santa Barbara, or Chico State University, majoring in either animal science, agriculture, education, or biology. She cannot wait to attend a four-year university next year and move on to the next chapter of her life. Congrats, Samantha. And then next, we have Tess Flesser. Tess transferred to Petaluma High School her sophomore year and is now a senior. Over the past three years, she has been involved in HOSA, snow jumping, and tutoring. She is currently the president of HOSA, and with them, she has placed competed and competed in statewide events and attended international conferences. Outside of school, she loves volunteer tutoring for Mentor Me, baking, writing songs, and working with horses. She's known since she was 10 that she wants to be a surgeon, and she plans to major in biology. Tess would like to go to college on the East Coast, and currently her top choices are Princeton and UNC Chapel Hill. Tess attributes her success to her supportive mom, amazing teachers, and counselors, as well as her peers who have always challenged her and encouraged her to be the best person she can. And then we also have the Student of the Month for March, and that is Sienna Berry and Ben Clemmons. So first, I'll read for Sienna Berry. Sienna is a senior at Petaluma High School, where she is currently the president of ASB. Sienna's participation in ASB for the last three years has been integral to her experience at Petaluma High. She loves planning events to celebrate her peers and their high school experience, which is something she's devoted countless hours this past year doing. Throughout high school, she has found a balance between taking multiple AP classes while still devoting time to leadership. From leadership to volunteering to exploring a variety of sports, Sienna has made it a mission to be involved in the Petaluma High School community in every way possible. On top of her involvement at school, Sienna has also been involved in the community at large. For the last three years, Sienna has been a volunteer coach of girls' soccer camps for Girls United Academy. In addition to teaching young women's soccer skills, she also helps them grow their sense of confidence and community. Sienna has also been working at Cold Stone Ice Cream for the past year, where she enjoys interacting with community members safely during the pandemic. Throughout everything she does, Sienna works tirelessly to put smiles on others' faces. Following graduation, Sienna is looking forward to attending a four-year university and majoring in public relations with a minor in marketing. She hopes to carry what she has learned through ASB at Petaluma High School into her college experience by getting involved in a leadership role. Sienna would like to thank her family and teachers for being a strong supportive system throughout her life. As she says goodbye to Petaluma High after graduation, she knows PHS will always be a home for her. Congrats, Sienna. And then lastly, we have Ben, who was the last Student of the Month for March. Ben is a senior at Petaluma High, who has always had a strong work ethic. For the past three years of high school, he has been taking challenging courses to enrich his educational experience. By challenging himself, Ben has prepared himself for life after high school. He plans to study environmental science and sustainability in college despite. Science has always been an interest of, area of interest for Ben, and he has taken science courses every year of high school. As a senior, Ben is taking two science classes, including marine biology and AP physics. Ben hopes to pursue his curiosity about science topics for the rest of his life. In addition to taking difficult classes in high school, Ben has involved himself with various clubs and activities. The most prominent of these is Link Crew, where Ben has helped new students get accustomed to life at Petaluma High. He has participated in Link Crew for both junior and senior year. Outside of school, Ben enjoys music, cooking, and reading. Congrats, Ben.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you, Julia, for just being so on top of everything. So moving back to, let's see. I believe we are done with February Students of the Month. So back to March, or moving on to March, Petaluma, we've done Kenworth, so Petaluma Junior High School. We have Noah and Miles. Whenever our presenters are ready, you can go ahead and read the write-ups.
Dana and Kelly, if you're on, I'm not seeing Grace or O'Leary.
I have them. I'm happy to read them if you would like.
That would be great.
Okay, I will start with Nola. Petaluma Junior High School is very excited to present Nola Valcheski as one of our March 2021 Students of the Month. Nola was born on August 11, 2007, in San Francisco. She has been an excellent student athlete and a wonderful asset at Petaluma Junior High for both years. Her plans are to continue to excel at her studies. Right now, she is interested in eventually attending New York University and pursuing a career in architecture or engineering. Nola is one of those hard-working students. She maintains straight A's and rigorous classes and has a very strong work ethic. She is particularly enjoying science, math, and history this year, and has a new fascination with genetics. Her math teacher says Nola contributes to a rich academic environment for all students, leading by her unselfconscious desire to learn. She is generous in sharing her ideas and putting forth thoughts to generate discussions. In addition, she has an outstanding work ethic and produces both thorough and accurate work. Gymnastics takes up a lot of Nola's time. Nola has been training since she was four years old, and her dedication, natural grace, and strength have paid off. She is now at Level Seven and going on to a renowned NAPA studio for 21 hours per week to work with her coaches. In additions to gymnastics, Nola loves to learn by experience. She fondly remembers her elementary school trips to Fort Ross, Angel Island, and Sixth Grade Camp. Last summer, Nola had planned to attend STEM Camp for Girls, which was sadly canceled due to the pandemic. She also enjoys safely hanging out with her friends and playing with her labradoodle, Henry. Her parents add, "We are very proud of Nola. We enjoy watching her achieve her goals in school, at gym, and in life." Thank you to all the teachers and staff at Grant Elementary and Petaluma Junior. You have cultivated and nurtured her love of learning, and we are very grateful. We too are proud. Nola is one of our students who stands out as an excellent role model. We are pleased to honor her with the title of Student of the Month for March. Congratulations, Nola. So I'm going to move on to our next one. We are honored to present Miles Kenner as one of our March 2021 Students of the Month. Miles was born in nearby Santa Rosa on January 30, 2007, and has been in the district since early elementary level. He is an all-around great student, always putting forth his best effort. Miles intends to continue his education through high school and into college. He looks forward to having a good job that he enjoys and providing for his own family. Miles is very flexible with and focused on his studies. He works hard and earns good grades, even through the challenges of distant learning. His science teacher comments, "Miles is always on top of all of his work. He never has missing work, and it's always well-done." His math teacher adds, "Miles leads by being helpful to other students and willing to share his ideas. He is often a catalyst for group work. He is always willing to make a contribution to advanced class discussions." Miles, this is not one, this is not Miles' first recognition. This humble student was awarded the McNear Citizenship Award at the end of sixth grade in recognition for his positive and helpful attitude with his teacher and peers. Robotics is Miles' primary hobby. He enjoys working with Lego Mindstorms the most, but gets involved with other types. He also enjoys playing outdoor basketball and gets to the court whenever possible. His parents add, "We're very proud of Miles' focus and positive attitude this school year and appreciate that his natural leadership qualities have shown through during distance learning. He works hard at everything he focuses on, and we look forward to seeing what his future brings." Miles Kenner is one of those all-around good students who can be relied upon to do good work. He is healthy, he's a healthy, happy young man who shares his joy of life with others, both at the school and in the community. We are proud to have Miles represent Petaluma Junior High School as our Student of the Month. Congratulations, Miles.
Congratulations to Nola and Miles. Thank you for reading both of those. Okay, and then lastly, we have our March Students of the Month from Casa, Ella and Jacob.
All right, it looks like I am up again. Hi, Jake. Is Ella here? All right. All right. Jake is a senior at Casa Grande High School with high aspirations for both his academic and occupational careers. He runs on the Casa Grande Varsity Cross Country Team and enjoys biking, fishing, and other outdoor activities in his free time. After high school, he plans to attend a four-year university within the Western States, where he can experience a positive and engaging educational atmosphere that encourages him to achieve success. During his college enrollment, he aspires to earn a bachelor's degree, with the possibility of a master's or a doctorate in the years following. He is interested in an array of majors, ranging from biomedical and biotech engineering to kinesiology and health sciences. Regardless of his decided field of study, he hopes to have a substantial impact on the future of humanity and contribute to the ever-expanding accessibility to futuristic innovations and advantageous knowledge. Congratulations, Jake.
Do we have Ella?
I'm not seeing Ella.
Okay. Let's add her for next time as well.
Got it.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. O, again. Congratulations, Jake. Okay. Moving on to Chris Thomas, Budget Revision Number Three. And second interim report, following the students again.
I know, I was just gonna say that. I don't know how I always follow student reports. It makes mine seem so mundane. Now, some of you might think it would seem mundane, even if I didn't follow, but you know, I can't help that, so. Okay, I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, so everybody can see my PowerPoint. Okay, so tonight we're presenting the Second Interim Report for 2021, and our Budget Revision Number Three. Typically, at this time, we would be doing Budget Revision Number Two, but remember, we had a 45-day budget revision we did last August because of the significant changes to the state budget. What is Second Interim? It's basically a requirement by the state of California under AB 1200 to file our fiscal position as of January 31, 2021. It's the second of two interim reports. We presented First Interim last December, and we're obligated to not only file this and bring it to the board before the 15th, but we have to actually deliver it to the Sonoma County Office of Education by that date as well. Petaluma City Schools, who are we, what comprises of our, what comprises our general fund? We're in elementary districts or two separate districts, as most of you know. We include the Pen Grove Charter School. We also have a Live Oak Independent Charter School. Those are not included in our financials because they're an independent charter. And then we have our Petaluma Joint Union High School District, which also includes the Mary Collins at Cherry Valley Charter School and the Petaluma Accelerated Charter, known as PAX. And then, of course, we have South County Consortium, which is also part of our general fund budget. So for those of you who are following along, and I know there's a few of you out there who want to see in more detail the report, all of the exhibits are posted online. You'll be happy to know I'm not going to go over the spreadsheets in detail. I do want to just point out a few different things that's on, that's included in Second Interim. There is the general fund, all of our other funds. We have a summary of our average daily attendance. We'll talk about that in a little bit. Multi-projections, we have cash flow projections, which show that we will maintain a positive cash balance, which is super important as a district. And we have the criterion standards, which is about a 26-page report that really looks at trend analysis and sees or contemplates and reflects how we're doing when it looks at various trends within the district itself. So in my presentation, I'm just gonna do high-level summary of what some, the Budget Revision Number Three and Second Interim is. This kind of shows the difference between Budget Revision Number Two and our First Interim Report last December and, and how we compare from a revenue perspective to where we are now. You can see at that time, our total revenues for the general fund were just over 99 million, and now they're just close to 99.3 million. Some slight fluctuations and variances, mostly in other state, some other federal revenue. And then our LCFF literally is very flat. It was about $8,000 change, which is shown on the spreadsheets. If you want to follow along, the spreadsheets show the variances for the more detailed level of these various revenues. And then looking at the expenditure side of the house, we have our various types of expenditures. Again, comparing first interim to second interim. And you can see our total expenditures went from just over $106 million to close to $106.6 million. The majority of the changes are going to be in services and other capital outlay. I mean, services, yes. And most of that is reflective of moving and shifting grant monies around. In particular, some of the CARES Act funds, some of the Career Tech Ed purchases that we're making in the capital outlay. A lot of it's related to auto shop. And again, some of that details in the spreadsheets. So a snapshot of where we look from a general fund perspective. We look at, in budget revision number three, what are our total revenues, which you just saw? What are our total expenditures? Our net revenues over expense, which is $7.3 million. And essentially, that shows we're spending $7.3 million more than what we're taking in. A significant portion of this is in the categorical side of the house, where we are budgeting our expenditures for carryover revenues for things like Title I, Title II, Title III, a lot of the CARES Act funds and other types of grant revenues or other types of grant programs where we received and earned funds last year, but we're spending it down this year. Overall, our ending fund balance is just under $10.4 million. If you look at the spreadsheets, what's important is to look at the deficit spending for the unrestricted budget, which is not shown here, but we're literally, our deficit spending is just under $1 million at $916,000. A significant portion of that is one-time in school site carryover, where about $400,000 of that is being budgeted from local unrestricted grants and donations at the school site level. Our components of any fund balance, this just breaks it down further. It shows the beginning fund balance, our reserves for economic uncertainties. South County also has a reserve, and so we break that out and we show that here it's just under $820,000. And then we show the amount available over and above our reserves and our set-asides. Some of the program highlights I wanted to do here were the cafeteria fund. I wanted to really show, in the blue, you can see our current revenues, expenditures, and the contribution from the general fund. And you can see what it was as of the adopted budget. You can see we have lost $900,000 in revenues, and that's primarily because of the pandemic and distance learning. We are not doing any food sales at the secondary level. We are continuing to offer grab-and-go lunches and breakfast under the Summer Seamless Program, but we have lost a significant amount of our revenues. On the expenditure side, you can see our expenditures have also come down. Many of our very critical team members in our food service department have actually been out serving our students in some of the academic learning cohorts that we have going on. But you can see proportionately, our expenditures have not declined at the same level as our expenditures. And therefore, you can see the contribution from the general fund has nearly doubled. I also wanted to touch on the STIRS and PERS, STIRS being the State Teachers Retirement System, employer contribution rates to kind of show this trend of the significant dollars that we have been seeing as the state has increased dramatically the amount of the historic employer contribution. So historically, as most of you are aware, the STIRS employer contribution was at 8.25%. You can see on the right-hand side, that 8.25% has gone up dramatically every year. And at this point, it stands at 16.15% for 2021. It dips a little bit more in 2122, but then it jumps up significantly in 2223. That's really important when we look at our multi-projections, because we're having to project what the significant dollar increases are. And it almost becomes a balloon payment when we look at 2022-23. Here, you can see that balloon payment kind of shown in dollars and cents. These are the actual 1415 through 2019-20. Those are the actual dollar-for-dollar increases year-over-year, based on those STIRS percentage increases that we just showed. You can see 2021, on the prior slide, it dropped from 17.1 to 16.15. And that's why you see this reduction of $423,000. Part of that is also because we offered a retirement incentive, and so some of our teacher salaries dropped as well. So not 100% of this is related to the increase. This is just literally showing the level of budgeted or the actual change in our STIRS contribution from year-over-year. But a significant portion of the 423 is related to that drop. And then you can see in 2122, again, we're going from 16.15 to 15.92, a very slight decrease. But still, that will generate roughly an $86,000 savings. And that's all projected, assuming everything in our multi-year projections is accurate. And we know that it will change, but based on what we know now, we would look at that. And then again, in 2223, that balloon payment from just under 16% to 18%, that's what's over a 2% increase. That's reflective of potentially about $750,000. That's that balloon payment I'm talking about. And then it's important to see that the annual change from 1415, what we were paying in STIRS versus what we're paying in STIRS now, that's a $4.3 million variance. So we're literally paying annually roughly $4.3 million than we were in 1415. Now, some of that is because of increases in salaries and increases in teachers and staffing and stuff. But the majority of this is literally based on that change in that rate increase from 8.25% to what's projected to be 18%. And that's going up 10%. I mean, not 10% of the 18, but literally 10%. I also wanted to point out, if we looked at, what is that if we converted that into a salary increase across the entire district, that would be representative of almost a 7% increase. So looking at the PERS rate on the left-hand side, you can see these are the PERS rate fluctuations. Back in 1516, the PERS rate was less than 12%. Historically, it's roughly about 13.02. It was for 40 years under the former revenue limit. And then you can see as the PERS rate has increased and is projected to be as high as 26.2 in 2324. And again, going up almost 3%, not quite 3%, between 2122 and 2223. So this exacerbates that balloon payment on STIRS. This is on top of that. And so then you can see the percentage increases off on the right-hand side and the dollar amounts that that represents, or 2.3 million over the past seven years. And that's, again, projected to 2324 or 2223, excuse me. Now, we've also completed multi-year projections, and those are also attached in the board item. We're obligated to not only present to the board our current budget and show that we can meet our current year obligations, but we're also obligated, based on a certain set of assumptions, to project out in two years, 2122 and 2223, for the second interim report this year. And so what we have to do is we have to project, what do our revenues look like? What do our expenditures look like? And then ultimately, what does that show from a deficit spending perspective? Can we maintain based on what we know now? And we know these assumptions will change as we get closer and actually staff and build a budget for 2122. But this is based on the best information we have right now. So when I look at the 2122 multi-year projections, we're using the DARF board, 3.84% COLA projected for next year. We're looking at some slight incremental increases in our interest earnings. You'll recall, we had lowered them significantly in this year's budget over last year. We're looking at a significant special education contribution increase of about $410,000. A lot of that related to some of those PERS increases and other increases. And some of it related to the PFT salary settlement that we're looking at. Step and column, that STIRS decrease of $86,000 that we showed on the prior slides, the PERS increases of roughly $320,000. We're looking at inflation roughly 2% on our expenditure side. No changes in indirect cost rates. We did include the PFT 2% increase, because that's not in the 2021 budget. So we put it into the multi-year projections. And then we also go through and eliminate all of those CARES Act expenditures that are in the budget. Because again, those are one-time in nature for this year, so we have to back them out of next year's budget and the revenues that go with them. And then for 2023, I should say, in 2122, we're still using 1920 P280A. So we're still using last year's ADA. We know we've got a dip in enrollment right now of over 100 students over what we had last year. We're projecting some loss of students next year as well, but we're protected based on using 1920s, 2019-2020 P280A. In 2223, that goes away, that protection goes away. And so we're projecting for this purpose, flat enrollment and ADA. It's really hard. Normally, we can use prior year ADA, but because of COVID-19 and distance learning, it's hard to predict what that's going to look like next year. We're assuming a 2% increase on our LCFF calc. Now, the Department of Finance was projecting 2.98 in their multi-year projections, and School Services was recommending 1.28. So we kind of split the baby here and we're projecting 2%. Again, this is two years out. It's very hard to know exactly where that COLA is going to come in. We think 2.98 is a little bit too high. We think 1.28 is a little bit too low. No changes in other local or interest earnings. We are looking at a more increased special education contribution against step and column, those STIRS and PERS increases we talked about, that's that balloon payment, those combined amounts. And then again, some inflation. So based on all of that, what does it look like? It looks like for the unrestricted, I'm just presenting the unrestricted in this particular case, because that's where that deficit spending becomes relevant. So our revenues are roughly just over $59 million, $59.1 million. Expenditure is 58.4 roughly, or we have a positive 735 revenues over expenditures. Ending fund balance, beginning fund balance, and we maintain our 5% reserves. For 2223, see how that positive expenditure or revenue over expense now becomes a deficit. We're now spending almost $90,000 more than what we're taking in, based on the assumptions that we used to build into these projections. And that's where that balloon payment comes in. How do we go from having a positive 735 when we know we're building a 2% COLA? That 2% COLA is not adequate to cover those balloon payments that we're seeing in STIRS and PERS. I wanted to touch on the coronavirus or the CARES Act funds. I know there's been a lot of questions. We have received just under $6.1 million in total between 1920 and 202021. The COVID SB17 funds came in last year. The remaining funds came in this year. And we have spent the majority of these funds already. So as of February, we only have about $559,000 to $560,000 left to spend. There's a summary sheet at the back of the multi-year, at the back of the assumptions that kind of go into a little bit more detail about what those dollars were spent on. I can tell you some examples of that is, you know, we bought new one-to-one devices for our students, K6, 7, 8. And to a certain extent, we bought some for 912. Chromebooks, I mean, some of those were iPads for the younger kids and Chromebooks for the upper grades. We bought new upgraded laptops for our teachers so that they can actually be more effective in the distance learning mode of education, things like mobile laptops, large screen displays for classrooms. Again, so that distance learning can be more effective. Various types of Plexiglas and PPE. We did the small learning cohorts, and so a lot of that money was spent on the small learning cohorts. Things like additional custodial cleaning equipment, hand washing stations, some professional development. We did approved connectivity for our wireless, so that students and staff could zoom more effectively based on having higher levels of connectivity. So those were many of the things that we spent the money on. There is a summary in this report at the back of the assumptions. And that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, you all hopefully have had a chance to go through and read in detail the couple hundred pages worth of financials. I'm sure that there was some overnight reading over the weekend that was very riveting. So if I, if there's a detail or something that you want me to take a deeper dive into, I'm happy to do that.
Chris, I just want to say thank you for staying on top of what has been a volatile year in budgeting with three revisions on top of the regular updates. I really appreciate that. Every time I hear this, I learn something new. And this time, your focus on STIRS and PERS, I need to ask a budgeting one-on-one type question. Where is it the state budgeting process that determines the increase in STIRS and PERS and the contributions by employee and employer? Is that right?
Absolutely. And just to give some ancient history, back in about 2000, 2001, this was under Governor Gray Davis era, the rules for retirement for STIRS and for CalPERS changed. And so they became much more generous, if you will. So for example, where it used to be, retirement used to be based on your average three highest years. It became your highest year. So what those changes did is they had an impact to the actuarial projections of fiscal solvency for both of those organizations. And then on top of that, the Great Recession hit, right? So I know PERS at one point was assuming 7% or over 7% of investment in order to remain fiscally solvent. Well, that dropped to an average of like 4%. So what the state did back in 2011-12, roughly 1213, is they came in, because the state actually establishes the STIRS rates. So the state took action, the governor and the legislature took action combined together, and they established rates that, we actually had a rate schedule that came out and said, this is what the rates are going to be. You're going to go from 8.25% to 19.1% at that time. And they did. They went up each year. But through the State Budget Act, the state then changes it. So each year, they kind of say, okay, yeah, we took that action, but the State Budget Act is going to change it for this particular upcoming year, and it's actually going to go up or down depending. And so that's the state piece. They took action. So this is purely based on the action that the legislature and the governor have taken. CalPERS is different. CalPERS has their own board. And so the CalPERS Board actually meets and sets rates potentially twice a year. Over the past several years, they're the ones who determine what the rates for the upcoming year are going to be. And usually, we don't get those final rates until the end of May or early June. So again, these are all projections. But because of those actuarials that they've done, they know that these rates have to go up this dramatically in order to make sure that the retirement funds stay fiscally solvent in the long term. That answer your question?
And so those, yeah, it does. Thanks. And those same bodies then do the two, three-year projections out also? Or is that someone else?
Yes, they do. And then School Services also provides us. So the Department of Finance quite often will project out what they think for the STIRS. And then, and then PERS does their own. The other thing I would add, just for full disclosure, is back in 2011-12, when they made the decision to increase the rates based on, you know, the recession and then the changes that have been made, there was also some major retirement reform that happened at that time, too, to really roll back many of the retirement benefits for new members. So everybody who was in the system already through, as of 2012, 2013, are considered classic members, and they're under the old, but the new people hired after and coming into the retirement system after 2013, they actually have a different level of benefits. And part of that is that the law is very clear. You can't change, you can't roll back benefits for members who have been painted into a system. And so that's why they had to, they had to do it that way and say, okay, we're going to make retirement reform, pension reform, but we're going to do it for members moving forward. But I wanted to just disclose that, too, that the state did take action in CalPERS to change some of those benefits. Other questions?
I have a short question that I feel like I probably should have asked. Like, last year, it just came to my brain is, so when the rates go, or the percentages go up for us as the employer, does that mean the rates go down for the? so when the rates go, or the percentages go up for us as the employer, does that mean the rates go down for the state? The rates go down for the employer, or the percentages go down for the state or the employee or?
That's a great question. It really is, because it's actually kind of all of the above or none of the above, depending on how you look at it. So back when they first increased the rates, the state actually took on additional 2% of STIRS. So remember, they control STIRS, not PURS.
Right.
They also assessed STIRS members. And so STIRS members historically paid 8% in. The employer was 8.25, STIRS members paid an 8. That went up incrementally over a few years, and that is now at 10%. So their contribution in has changed as well. CALPERS know the, the state never put in anything for CALPERS anyway, and the employees have stayed the same. So it's just been the employer rate that has gone up.
Okay.
Good question.
Cool. Thank you.
Maddie?
I was just wondering about the unspent monies. Is there a timeframe on that where you have to spend it?
There is, but it's either June 30th or it's in 22, 2022. So there was a, there was a clear timeline for the learning loss, the federal learning loss mitigation fund, the biggest significant amount of money. And that was as of December 31st. So we spent every penny as of December 31st that we had to spend to preserve those funds.
Okay. And so this is separate from that?
It's included, so.
It's included, but those were designated for a particular, and so this, okay, good.
Yeah, on the slide, I showed you the coronavirus relief funds. They were 3.7 million. That's the amount of money that had to be spent by 1231 of this past year, 2020. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? As riveting as the student reports, not as riveting?
It's fascinating.
It's lots.
This is not stuff I could go home and say honey to my husband and go over the stuff because his eyes just glaze over. So we, we learned long ago, we don't talk about this stuff because he just doesn't get as excited about it as I think he should. So anyway.
It just is building my brain cells, Chris. It's all good.
Okay, well, later on in the agenda, you'll see an action item for you. Hopefully, our recommendation will be that we're presenting a solvent budget report here and that you can approve it with the positive certification. Just as a reminder, positive certification is a district that will meet their financial obligations the current year and two years out. Qualified, may not. And then negative, will not. So we're very clearly in the, in the, in the positive certification range. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Fair Act update and diversify our narrative. Is that you, Mr. DeGraw? Mr. Sutter?
Yeah, it's, it's me, Liz, and our student. I don't know if our students are.
Oh.
Ashley, are Megan and Daphne in? Megan wasn't going to be off work until seven, so we're not sure if we should have Cliff go first, or if they're going to go first, if they're here already.
I'm not seeing them. Unless they're under a different name that I can't find.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead, Cliff, and then hopefully they'll make it?
Sure. I'll try to, I'll try to stress. All right, so, um, yeah.
He's just grateful, he's just grateful he's following my presentation, huh, Cliff?
Yeah, it's always great to follow, Chris. Really is. Appreciate that. Kidding. All right. So yeah, so the board has asked that I provide an update on our Fair Act progress. And just as a matter of kind of reminding folks what, what this is all about. So the state legislature updated ed code a few years ago to expand the inclusion of certain groups in social studies curriculum, particularly California and US history, and how they've contributed to society. And the law added some groups, including LGBTQ Americans, as well as those with, with disabilities. So it broadened the ed code and it broadened the curriculum in social studies. So following that, there was an update in the history social science framework from the state. And in particular grades, that's where these changes were made. And as a district, we have not adopted new social studies curriculum since then. As, as a major adoption, we have had some levels, like we adopted new government and econ books at, I believe it was CASA earlier, earlier this year, and then we got some new social studies materials at Kennelworth as well. So we have pockets where we have the most updated materials, which do have Fair Act compliant curriculum. But in the meantime, until we do adopt, and our plan is to look at social studies curriculum next year to pilot and move for adoption after that. We're currently finishing up our high school science adoption this year, albeit a very strange adoption in the middle and pilot in the middle of the pandemic. But so we, we gathered our K-12 curriculum group last month and, you know, began using the group to try to brainstorm, what are, what are the best ways we can move the work forward in the meantime while we wait for adoption? And we landed kind of on some key areas. One of them was being able to kind of curate and put together both, both the resources for teachers and students. So under that umbrella, that includes updating our curriculum, which is something we're going to be doing next year. Also finding resources for teachers and other subjects that can support the Fair Act. Well, the Fair Act specifically is social studies curriculum. We talked about how there are, there are ways in, in world languages, in English, where you can easily include literature from members from these represented groups that would be Fair Act compliant. We also talked about including books and activities from a more diverse population. And I won't go too far into that because that's what Daphne and Megan are going to talk about. We did have them come to our meeting in February and share a little bit about their, you know, their interest in what they're looking to do. And it seemed to jive very well with, with the, with the Fair Act and with our curriculum push. So we invited them and they shared out with the group, and you'll see how they, these two things really go hand in hand pretty well. And then we also started to curate some resources for PCS teachers. So not only information about what the Fair Act is and what it isn't, but also resources that they could use with lesson planning, with having conversations with students, conversations with families. So that, that falls under the big umbrella of resources. And then the other kind of main takeaway we had from how we, you know, what we want to do to bridge the gap is staff training. So we broke up into two different groups and kind of brainstormed, what are those next steps? We plan to work with the Professional Growth and Learning Committee as we plan the June 7th PD day to include you know, Fair Act sessions, especially for our social studies teachers. We talked about, you know, making sure that we have buy-in from staff. So, you know, fully educating them on what this is, what the history is. We talked about some, some PD ideas. For example, potentially having a keynote speaker from potentially the Poverty Law Center or organizations like that to come and speak on this topic. In addition to just the PD day, we talked about different workshops we could bring in to kind of continue the work that we've done with, like the Youth Truth Survey or the Circle Up Training we've been doing. And then making sure that part of our PD plan includes, you know, helping teachers have a kind of a common language and a shared vision for, for students. And then they started pulling together some resources, too, in, in the other group for, specifically for PD. And what we did is we, as we broke in our last meeting, I think it was last week, we started looking for resources that other districts have put together. And we found, you know, a few really good examples from districts around the state that have a, a piece of their website specifically dedicated to the Fair Act and resources. So educating the public, educating staff, and then also providing resources. So we've got a couple more meetings coming up in the next two months. And we plan to continue gathering resources and planning for staff PD. And then we talked about how do we want to make those resources available to staff? So we'll probably do a combination of some type of internal shared drive where staff can have access to this, these resources and these, these documents. You know, beyond when employees come and go, it'd always be there. But also, we talked about you know, creating part of our website dedicated to this as well. So it's, it's available publicly and it's also available internally. So we had, we had a good turnout at our first meeting. Obviously, we spent a lot of this year planning for distance learning, planning for hybrid. Haven't had a lot of committee work outside of that. Spent a lot of time in committee on those other topics. So it was good to, to kind of reconvene our curricular committees. We've made a lot of, you know, made a lot of progress in the hybrid planning, and now we're able to turn kind of our focus back to what we used to do, which was curriculum planning and mapping. So glad to be doing that and glad to be able to, you know, help move this forward. And that's, that's pretty much the update. I don't know if there's any questions or comments? Did I spread, did I stretch long enough?
It's awesome to see all this moving forward.
You know, I, I, I still don't see their names in the wait, and I emailed just to say, to ask if they're here under another name. So hopefully they'll, at some point.
Well, I, I would love to hear from these students. So Liz, do you think you can work with them to bring them next meeting?
Definitely, yes. And I'll see if they email back and they're here under another name, but I'm not seeing their names in here. So I'll continue to work with them.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. What, what do you guys all think? Do you want to?
Definitely.
Okay. Is there anything that you want to share out apart from what they were going to say, Liz, or you want to just wait till the next meeting?
We could just wait to hear their presentation because they have a slide deck that they've turned in and everything, and I'm
Okay.
Voices around it, so.
Okay.
I think it's great. You guys have continued on this even with everything else that you mentioned, Cliff, about, you know, the focus being on not so much curriculum development. So I think you, it sounds like you've been just, you know, it's been there and it's great. I really appreciate it.
Well, I, I think.
All the teachers that are also continuing to.
You know, we did stretch long enough. I see Megan in here now. We can bring her in.
Oh. Yeah. I can always stretch it.
Yeah, I, I was just going to say, you know, I appreciate the board keeping this on, you know, on deck. It's clearly something we didn't want to forget about. But we clearly had more pressing, you know, kind of needs at the beginning of the year. So glad this was still there and it helped keep us focused. All right, there they are. They're here.
All right, Megan and Daphne, if you wanted to take it away, you can go ahead and just jump in with your presentation.
Hi, everybody. My name is Daphne. I'm a junior at Petaluma High, and I am one of the district leads for our chapter of Diversify Our Narrative.
I'm Megan. I'm also a junior at Petaluma High, and I'm one of the district leads. We have two more people from our chapter here that might be in the attendees. Malaya Cantor and Alondra Diaz. If they could be able to speak as well.
Repeat those names one more time for me.
Um, Malaya Cantor, Alondra Diaz, and, sorry, and Risa Tinsley Green as well.
I see Malaya on the list. Did Ashley get her?
Got it. Okay, so Malaya, and there were two more?
Yeah, oh, sorry. Alondra Diaz and Risa Tinsley Green. If they're not on here, it's okay. We can try to take over their parts.
Hi, my name is Malaya Cantor.
I don't think I see the others on here, unless I missed them.
All right. Whenever you guys are ready, you go ahead.
Okay, so on the next slide, it tells you a little bit about Dawn, which is Diversify Our Narrative. It is a nationwide student effort that is working to include diverse texts in our mainly English curriculum through our main goal, which is to have each English class teach at least one book that is written by a Black, Indigenous, or person of color every year. And then you can move on to the next slide.
Yeah, so the demographic of Petaluma is predominantly white, about 80% of Petaluma is white. And the other percentages are broken down fairly evenly among other races. And that just shows how important it is that especially in an area like this, where most people tend to have similar views and there's predominantly white people here, we need to have these books so that people can have a better worldview on what it's like to live as a person of color.
So our chapter, can you go back? Can you go back? Yeah. So we have 217 signatures that come from students that are currently at Petaluma High, as well as Casa Grande, and their parents, alumni, and future students. And we also have an Instagram account where we post about events that are happening. We repost information from the executive team. And then we also give book recommendations and other little research topics. And we currently have nine active members in our chapter.
Oh, can you go forward one more? I think we already talked about this. Perfect. Um, so the reason why we need a diverse curriculum is because at our schools, pretty much all of us have heard people just casually say racial slurs in the hallways. And in the classroom, sometimes when we're reading out loud and there's a slur in a book, either the teacher or the student will read it out loud. There are testimonials available on Dear Petaluma High School and Dear Casa Grande. We also had a Google form sent out where we asked people for their feedback on what they've heard in the hallways, and we got some fairly interesting responses on that. They also go to show that racism is prominent, even in an area like ours.
So what we're asking from you guys is to create some kind of resolution to require each high school English class to teach at least one book per year from the reading list that's right here. There's a link attached. But basically, it's just Black, Indigenous, or persons of color authors about their stories and different perspectives. And so I'm not sure if you guys have any questions or?
How, how did you guys get started on this? Like, how did this group come about?
Over the summer of 2020, I found it through social media and I looked into it more and found that we could start our own chapter in our own district. And I was really interested in the, like, message and what we were trying to do. So Daphne and I talked and started our own chapter and got some other people that we knew were interested in it to join as well.
Yeah, and it's open to any high schoolers in the Petaluma Joint Unified High School District. So if anyone knows anybody who's interested in being on it, especially because we're on Zoom, we can pretty much have anybody from any school in this district be involved in it.
Well, I do follow you on Instagram. Your page is really great and very informative. So was there like a specific incident that prompted you to want to start this? I mean, I know you guys talked about some racial incidences that you've heard or seen, but can you tell us a little bit more about that?
I haven't personally experienced anything directed at me. But I have, there was one of the student testimonials that we got was that they are no longer able to, in one of the English classes, they're no longer able to perform an activity that they used to do because a student wrote a racial slur on the board. And there's a lot of other cases like that. And in my classes, I've heard racial slurs being read out in books. I'm not sure if Daphne and Malaya have anything that they want to add on?
To talk about something more recent, I To talk about something more recent, I know a lot of students as an Asian American have also been called some Asian American slurs, especially right now during COVID, some things like, like China virus and things like that. So that's been really difficult. And there's no education or acknowledgement about that in the classrooms, which is, makes it harder for students to feel safe and comfortable in the school environment.
Yeah, just adding on to that, like our history curriculums don't cover that much history outside of Europe either. So I think something like this is potentially a really interesting way to present those perspectives. Because if you have a book written by somebody who lives their life without the privilege of being white, they can, like everything about their worldview is different. And I think that that's something that all benefits, all students can benefit from reading about.
I really appreciate your effort and thoughtfulness in this. I think it's a fantastic idea. I think it's needed. And I wanted to ask, have you taken this up with your English teachers? And, and then I also want to ask Cliff if this is something that we can present to the curriculum committee or maybe the English, you know, departments or how, how this could be considered at the school sites.
I think that there are a lot of times when students try and bring up what's going on in their personal lives or that, things that happen at school with their teachers. More recently, one of the students in my science class tried to bring that up with a teacher, but she just shut down the chat. I think because she was feeling a bit scared and, you know, you have to think about both sides. Obviously teachers shouldn't, like they have feelings as well. They're humans. They won't know how to deal with every single situation. So that student felt really shut down and that teacher probably felt pretty scared. So I think maybe creating an environment where students know that it's okay to talk about it and where teachers know how to handle it would make it a lot easier for both parties.
I'm sorry. What I meant was have you asked your teachers about this proposal to get at least a book a year taught, you know, on by, by block authors?
A couple of months ago, we tried to host like a Q and A session for the teachers at Casa in Petaluma High. We didn't have a very good turnout, which I think part of that was because we had literally started the chapter like a month or two before. So I think we'll probably try to do that again, especially if this gets passed. We do have a couple of teachers that emailed us back when we were advertising that, that said that they support it. So yeah, we have some of the English teachers that support it for sure.
Also, in our like initiative to get petition signatures, we did reach out to a lot of, especially humanities teachers and received a lot of positive feedback for the petition through that as well. I know I contacted like all of the English teachers I've had in the past couple of years and they all were super supportive.
And then back in mid February, we also talked at the curriculum committee meeting. So.
You guys are amazing. I'm really impressed. You're, you're advocating for what you believe in. You, you, you think of head, you, you find out where can I go? I go to the curriculum committee. I go to Cliff DeGraw. That's the person I go to. I come to the school board. You're doing all the right things. I, I went to, I actually, a, a teacher sent, you know, an email that said that there was a diversify your narrative webinar. So I went because I didn't know what it was and I'm so impressed that you guys took that and then made your own chapter. Was that what kind of inspired you or did you know about it before? I just really admire what you're doing.
Thank you. I, that means a lot. Um, yeah, we kind of started the chapter a little bit before that. But we thought, we thought that the webinar, there have been a couple in the past. So we were kind of inspired by that.
Good.
Um, I'm really sorry, Malaya and other students that have had to go through that on your campus. Your school should be a safe place. I would hope that, you know, if this continues to happen, you guys would also reach out to your counselors, your administrators, even through Stop It, do it anonymously. But that's one to acknowledge that I'm sorry that that, that that happened to you and your classmates.
And I was just going to add, I mean, we could definitely continue to work with, with this group, with our curriculum committee to, to help them, you know, in this effort. They did present in February. You know, obviously we can move forward with or without a board resolution, but you know, if that's something the board decides to take up, you know, I'm sure that would be appreciated and that also would give us a little more, you know, impetus as we move forward. But yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll move forward with them either way.
Yeah, I want to thank the students for, for joining in on this. This is, this is probably the beginning of partnerships that, you know, we've talked about wanting to further develop out in all the different areas and getting, having all of our stakeholders in, providing input into their education in this case, or other issues that we're, we're faced with, because they certainly come with a perspective that's very different and can at times be very raw. Might be difficult for people to hear, but it's also important. So you, you're, you guys are heroes for us. So thank you.
Yeah, I'm really, really impressed y'all. I was a relatively active student at Casa Grande who cared about these issues, but I would have, I had no idea about these curriculum committees and the school board, the way that you all do. So keep up the awesome work and thank you for, you know, advocating for a lot of these students who are reporting things anonymously. And, you know, putting your faces and names and time and energy behind it. It's really powerful.
And, and I would respond to Cliff saying move forward and I don't think we need to wait for the board. I think the board, you know, this sounds great for the board. I think you're going through the regular channels of curriculum. Should, I would think be able to do this.
Yeah. And I appreciate Cliff, you know, you, you guys came and presented at that meeting and then, you know, we moved along with the discussion and I was at the meeting last week, we continued the discussion. So appreciate you also Cliff, listening to these students and understanding how important this is, not just to them, but to all of, all of them. All right. Any last words, students? Since you have the whole district's attention?
Any last word? That sounds ominous.
Sorry, I meant it in the best way possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Final thoughts.
Final thoughts. There we go. Thank you, Caitlin. Any final thoughts? No, this was fantastic. Thank you so much. Yeah, this was great.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Yeah. And thank you Liz too for getting these, these kids to present and be persistent. Kids, it was great.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone who coordinated this presentation. So now we are moving on to comments from the public on non-agendized items. So we're going to read our public comment policy with a few updates. Under Government Code Section 54954.3A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, program services and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four minute per person limit or 20 minute limit per subject matter. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption during the meeting. Before cutting a person off, removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or warned last time, please consider that your warning. You can also submit your input in writing by email or by other means to the superintendent, board members or other designated staff. So with that, we will move on to public comment. Go ahead.
Again, this is, these are, I, comments that people want to make about things that are not on the agenda.
And we'll have time later for agenda item, public comment.
Yeah, we'll have time later for, for a variety of different agenda items.
So we're going to open the chat. And if you can put in the chat what your public comment is related to, that would be great. Just so we know when to bring you up for your comment.
I think we can close the the chat.
Okay. All right. So we will start with Sasha Cohen.
Hello. I, I don't know. Can you guys hear me? Yes. Okay, great. So I just wanted to comment that North Bay Children's Center on the Cherry Valley or Mary Collins at Cherry Valley School Campus has just had its second licensing complaint regarding grabbing a child's arm in the last two years. This most recent one was from September of 2020 and it involved a child being grabbed by the arm. And previous to that, in September of 2019, a staff member hit a child on the arm. And I would just like to advocate that their contract at Cherry Valley be terminated and we instead look for a different childcare facility to take over that spot. I do know that there is a parent who owns a reputable childcare in Petaluma who would be interested in taking over that contract and has reached out to Chris Thomas. And that's pretty much all I wanted to say was to draw attention to the fact that they have two licensing complaints in about a year's time and they really don't belong on our school campus.
Okay. Thank you, Sasha. My take?
Okay. Hi. Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Yeah, thank you. Well, good evening, board members. Thank you for having a place for public comment. I was very excited and thrilled to sit on this board meeting because sometimes they're a little long. But two out of those three students were dual immersion students of mine in the past and their presentation was just outstanding. So I'm here to speak to you as a parent and as a definitely a Petaluma community member. And I'm asking the board to, really, I'm in, I'm speaking in support of ethnic studies. It's really time to rethink the way we do school. And I'm asking the board to really adopt a diversity agenda as a framework of how we operate schools. We can no longer operate as usual. The pandemic has definitely become that portal that we can now think of new things. Our teachers and students and parents are extremely flexible. It's imperative that you look at practices, policies and procedures which negatively impact the ability to advance a diversity agenda. To put it another way, let's look at the things that, that are a deterrent to our district becoming one that fails to value inclusive excellence. A diversity agenda is really a diverse, an umbrella term which includes, and it's not limited to the issues we have before us at hand today and those yet to come, such as ethnic studies, diversity and hiring, diversity in our narrative and the FAIR Act that we just spoke about, creating partnerships. And the ideas presented by Cliff McGrath today that we really need to even start looking through this diversity lens in all aspects that we do as a district. So I urge the board to adopt a diversity agenda as a new lens in which we take a look at all components of our district and at all aspects, aspects of our district so that we can become a district that is really inclusive of excellence. That's what we expect from our students. So let's expect that of ourselves. There is really, there's a true danger in presenting ethnic studies as a standalone item and issue. It's really interdisciplinary. This is why I'm framing it this way. So I do want to in future support the board and, you know, give you some resources as well to help support the district. So we can look at so many issues that are coming before us. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Next up is Jennifer Silver.
Right there. Hello?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd first like to congratulate the entire district on the decision to recommend Matthew Harris as our superintendent. Gary, we wish you all the best in your transition in full-time dad role. You deserve it. I am very concerned about the risk to our youth in Petaluma as we return to in-person learning. Many students ride their bikes to and from school. And recently, Indivisible Petaluma developed a plan to target white, black, bike riding students because they feel that the school board and police have not disciplined teens to their level of expectation. My husband and I wrote a letter sharing this with the city council, Petaluma Police and the entire school board. Indivisible Petaluma was planning locations throughout Petaluma to target, trap and discipline youth, including times. There are three Petaluma City School Ben Board members who are members of Indivisible Petaluma. Not one of them brought this concern to the city nor commented about its inappropriateness. A warning should have been sent to the parents within the district with their knowledge. As administrator of Petaluma Indivisible was also the perpetrator of both verbal and physical violence against Petaluma teenagers in the last three months. She physically attacked a student and board members have continued their alliance with this organization in the light of the public outcry and physical evidence of the abuse of a minor. They have not upheld their civic responsibility to the students they are elected to represent and be offered a safe in school environment. Certain board members actively participate in this level of conversation on a private chat. They have clearly violated board bylaws regarding the social media participation section 9010. We are requesting that these board members resign in their trustee role as trustee. Letters of intent to recall and California Public Records Act requests are forthcoming. Thank you. Sorry about that, I got kicked off of Zoom. All right, next up is Sal.
Yes, can you hear me? Yes, okay, hi. Yeah, Sal and Rockless, they then pronouns with Petaluma tide, North Bay LGBTQI families. Just wanted to, I guess, first, I guess echo Myte's comments a minute ago regarding the diversity kind of agenda and framework that she was describing. Just, yeah, definitely support what everything that she just described regarding that. And just also thank the students for those amazing presentations that we got earlier this evening around Diversify Our Narrative. And it's just really great to see the student voice and student leadership and organizing around this. And also just express appreciation for what we heard about the Fair Act sort of work that's going on, especially with the pandemic here, the administrators and educators, you know, getting together and, you know, making time to push that forward. It's really, it's great to hear. It sounds like there's a lot of exciting stuff coming, you know, particularly with that emphasis on, you know, kind of gathering resources and kind of professional developments and, you know, getting to this place of sort of shared understanding, you know, in terms of going forward with that curriculum and coursework. You know, Fair Act implementation, you know, in addition to including the contributions of LGBTQIA+ individuals, people with disabilities, and other cultural and ethnic groups in history and social sciences to a greater degree. It also really helps to further the overall goal of, you know, creating a safer and more welcoming environment for all students through this increased representation and a more complete telling of all of our histories. So really appreciative of that. And yes, similarly, again, just, yeah, supportive of what Myte described regarding the ethnic studies, you know, kind of umbrella and curriculum and diversify our narrative, and how that can create a bridge between school and community involvement, advocacy, organizing, and activism. And research also shows that well-designed and well-taught ethnic studies curricula have positive academic and social outcomes for students, which may be more important now than ever as the district seeks to mitigate learning losses and address the social emotional impacts associated with the pandemic. And on a different topic, just wanted to urge the district to put, I guess, when looking at, I guess, in the search and recruitment of a new assistant superintendent of HR, since I think that role is going to need to be fulfilled by a new person, just wanted to urge the district to put diversity and equity at the forefront in that process. There's a significant need for the, you know, PCS workforce and leadership to reflect the diversity of its students in the community at large. And this position is a key component of that. And so just again, want to express support of the school board and the ongoing work that you all are doing to prioritize equity and create safe and welcoming school environments for all students. Thanks.
Thank you, Sal. Next up is John. Sorry, since I was off, I don't have the last name. I lost the whole chat. So, oh, there we go.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me? Hi, good evening, Madam President, Clerk Jan, Trustees Cloud, Quinn, and Webster. Sounds like make us a great band right there. I will own that if you make it. And thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight, and thank you for the work you do for our community. Really appreciate what you do. My name is John McIntigret, and I am lucky enough to be serving the men and women of International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 551 as their business manager. That is the local electrical union commonly known as IVW Local 551. As you know, not everyone who graduates high school is going to go on to college and pursue a higher education. Several of the students from the Petaluma School District and other school districts are looking for a sustainable career in fields that do not require a college education. Enter the building trades. The building trades is definitely not a second choice. Quite the contrary, we believe that a life in the construction building trades, starting out in the union apprenticeship, will serve you well on your way to fulfilling the dream of having a family sustainable life here in Sonoma County. Union way of life in the billing trades includes healthcare for you and your family, a wage that allows you to stay in your hometown, raise your kids near their grandparents so they can help with the babysitting, and your kids can go to the same school you went to and hear story after story about the teachers that both child and parent can say they both had. Working a long career as a union electrician or any other trade also gives you a pension, so you can retire with dignity at a age where you can still pick up your grandkids and swing a golf club. One more thing about graduating from a union apprenticeship program is there is no college debt, and you are now classified as a journeyman in the craft you had chosen. Like I said, I represent the electrical workers in this area, and our apprenticeship program is here in Sonoma County. It's in Santa Rosa on Corby Avenue. We invite you all for a visit. As soon as we can open it again, you're all welcome to come for a visit. We currently have over 15% of our apprentices from the Petaluma schools, and hundreds of other members of ours would call themselves Petaluma schools alumni. When you graduate as a journeyman inside wireman, state certified in all electrical installations, the world is truly your oyster. We regularly attend job fairs to get the message out, to let the student population know that the billing trades is an excellent way of life. It's an amazing way to provide for you and your family. There's a lot of pride in the work that has been performed, and we in the billing trades are eagerly waiting for future generations of leaders to come apply and join our ranks, learn what it takes to have a fulfilling life out in the trenches, building the county Sonoma one block or electrical circuit breaker at a time. Thank you, and have a great rest of your meeting.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Sarah.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for doing this. I wanted to first thank you to the board and the administration and to our students and staff, classified and certificated, and everyone here for consistently navigating the ever-changing, challenging landscape of growth through diversifying our representation in our schools, our narrative, and our leadership, and for supporting and uplifting our Black Indigenous and people of color in our community, including our students, our staff, and the board. Thank you all for taking a stand and working with our community to help us grow through that. I really wanted to thank Daphne and Megan, Alondra, and Malaya for speaking up in regards to diversifying our narrative. Thank you to Liz and Cliff for putting all of that together. Tide supports, diversify, Tide also supports the board in voting yes and creating a mandate to require English curriculum to include authors of Black, Indigenous, and people of color. We invite also these youth to join the Youth Voices cohort, which is brought forth by the Equity in Education Initiative that is created at the Hana Institute, where Youth Voices was heard through SCO. We would love to have you there. If any of you are interested in joining that, please reach out to petaluma.tide@gmail.com, and we will put you in touch with them. There is another Diversify Our Narrative cohort out of Sonoma Valley, and I know that those teens and you all will be able to continue to make change in the best way. Tide also urges the board to incorporate this into our ethnic studies program. As Myte mentioned, and Sal as well, this is an over, just a lens that we need to be viewing all of our policies with. While wanting to congratulate and say thank you to Gary for your service and congratulate Matthew Harris for the appointment that I imagine is going to get approved tonight. Congratulations, Matthew, on becoming our new superintendent. We look forward to working with you and advocating for that diversity and inclusion as we move forward and working together. And as Sal said, our next up will be replacing you for our human relations person. And that is a really important person to make sure that we have representation of our community, our staff, and our students in the administration. You all are amazing and wonderful. Thank you for working your behinds off during probably the hardest time you have ever had to deal with. So we have your back. We're here with you. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Sarah. Next up is Peter from SCO.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I just want to say that presentation by Daphne and Megan and Maya, that was just incredible. It was just such an incredible example of student empowerment. You know, on the SCO board, we pass resolutions, but it comes from the top down. I mean, it's the first time I've heard of students going to a board and asking the board to do a resolution. And that was just amazing. And also, in some ways, they're taking charge of the curriculum. They're asking for certain books by certain authors to be included in their classes. So that's just incredible and how you all encourage that. And then, you know, I just want to just, again, congratulate Gary and best wishes on your retirement. And the next step, you're not retired. You're going to do something else, I'm sure. But, and just the six years that I've gotten to know you and, you know, what you've had to deal with, the fires, the PG&E shut offs, COVID. You really have helped guide this district through some really tough times, and it's not over yet. And then, you know, congratulations, Matthew, on your appointment as a new superintendent. I'm looking forward to get to know you and, you know, SCO's there to support you in any way we possibly can. So congratulations on that. And the board, you know, navigating all this. And I'm sure you're dealing with pressure from the community, open the schools, keep them closed, back and forth. That's gotta have been really hard. And, you know, appreciate you with your plan of reopening the schools in April. And hopefully, we'll get out of the purple into the red real soon. And lastly, really want to acknowledge your teachers and all your classified staff and all the work they've done for the past year now in terms of distance learning and now gearing up for in-person instruction. In some ways, the hard work's going to start with that because they're going to have to teach kids how to be back in school again, who haven't been in school for over a year. And, you know, I heard recently that the third graders in this county have not had one full year of school since they started in TK. That's just, I don't know, that's, that really gets me. So anyway, congratulations, Matthew, and good luck, Gary. And I want to acknowledge the board and everybody.
Thank you, Peter. And lastly, for this section, I believe, right, Phoebe? Is she our last public comment of this section? Let's make sure I have everyone. Yeah, okay, go ahead, Phoebe.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I just wanted to follow up. I know this board had been very interested back in the fall, and I did serve on the committee to reopen the schools where there were a lot of discussions about cohorts for students with special needs as well as students in the English Language Development programs in our schools. And I have not heard about any of those actually been started with certificated teachers leading those cohorts. So eager to hear about that on campuses because I feel like those populations are really suffering. I have many friends that have students with IEPs, and they continue to be struggling with the distance learning. So eager to hear about some of those cohorts getting started sooner than the April dates, if possible, as well as cohorts at the secondary level. We did hear the principal speak two weeks ago. I have a student at Petaluma High School. I have not heard about any cohort at that level other than band and some athletics, starting so interested in clubs, being able to be organized in a social setting on campus. You know, small individual groups, meeting with counselors, whatever it may be, just looking for some sort of social emotional support that I know has been very relevant and topical, but have yet to see any of those in place or advertised or implemented. So just encouraging to start to get some of those in place and to share that information with all of the students. So thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Phoebe. All right, moving on, reports on activities and correspondence of school board members. The last couple of weeks, we, as a collective, have gone to circle up. K-12 curriculum meeting, CSBA webinar on redistricting, hybrid secondary webinar, and the K-12 Q and A about school reopening. Did I miss something? I got all of our activities, yeah. No, Caitlin? Oh, sorry, I thought you were saying something. Okay, moving on. Comments from the public on consent agenda items. So if anyone has a comment on something on the consent agenda.
That would be comments on items that are connected, if you're looking online, to under consent agenda that begins on number 10. The items in the 10 series, that's the employment reports, minutes from the meetings, purchase orders, purchase approvals, exciting things like memorandums of understanding, inspection reports, and awards of bids, as well as collective bargaining agreements and whatnot.
The chat is open.
We just might get out of here before 10 o'clock tonight.
I'll let you decide when to close the chat, Gary.
Okay, whether we can close it.
All right, first up, we have Sarah again.
You know, I just can't get enough of you. I just wanted to speak on advocating for Mentor Me. I know you all have a very long relationship with Mentor Me in the district, and now during COVID times and post-COVID times, that relationship will just be more and more important. UC LC with QUAC, which is the United Community Learning Coalition, comunidad unida en aprendizaje laboratorio, has worked very closely with Mentor Me to help scaffold and work with the district to support our students in ninth and 10th grade, creating a mentor slash kind of mentee tutoring program that we're hoping to roll out very soon. We've been working with Jason and in trying to get that rolled out with a bunch of different organizations, including Family Life Center, Mentor Me, Petaluma People Services, and so on and so forth, and TID. And that relationship with our community organizations and the district needs to be strengthened. I think that you guys are probably already know that, and you're going to do it. I just wanted to advocate for it because I saw it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, next up, we have Rebecca.
Hi, thank you for taking the time. I tried to get this out for the public comment of non-agendized items, but I have just heard some concern among parents at Cherry Valley about the use of quats for the nightly fogging to disinfect and just some concerns about, you know, the safety of that compound. I did hear that there is the potential use of peroxide-based compound as opposed to that, and I just wanted to address that this evening and put it out there. So, thank you.
Yeah, we've been working on that particular issue. So we didn't want folks to think that we weren't aware that there were some of the concerns and we're mitigating that.
Thank you, Gary. Next up, we have Joe.
Joe, you.
Good evening to the members of the Petaluma City School Board and local community members. My name is Joe Tremaine, and I represent the IVW Local 551 Electrical Workers here in Sonoma County. I'd like to comment on the 10.23 AMS.net for the low voltage fiber upgrades project and the trip light replacement batteries. These comments for clarification on the state mandated mandated skill level for battery replacement and UPS work. Now, these trip lights. Now, these trip light replacements, they they come in multiple varieties. You can have the the one line, single phase, 120 volt standard thing you'd find, you know, in your household. But they have 208 volt, um, three-phase UPS units, as well as 400 plus three-phase units that, you know, they can install. This type of work is classified as electrical work to be performed by state-certified electricians and apprentices trained by state-approved apprenticeship programs. Based upon the fact that this work takes place in our local schools, I feel it should be performed by local skilled and trained electricians and and local apprentices, being paid under a prevailing wage platform. It's the what the, you know, the question is definitely yes, it should be, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Joe. We did have one comment um, for the superintendent item, but we will bring them back when we get to that, so.
Oops.
Sorry, I muted myself. Approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion.
Um, I uh, have to recuse myself on 10.2.4. So the Mentor Me Petaluma People Services contract, so um, I guess I need to remove it.
You could make them, you could make a motion to to either remove it or motion to approve all but 10.2.4 and then it'll come back. Someone else will.
Okay, ISO move uh, to um, to take that out and and vote on the rest of it and then come back to that one.
I second.
Okay, do we have any questions before we um?
This will be just a vote to to.
Just to remove, okay. Um, all in favor?
I.
I. Opposed?
Now, somebody else will want to make a motion on it.
Uh, I moved to approve 10.2.4, is that what it was?
Yes.
Yeah.
I second. All in favor?
I.
I opposed. Okay. So now.
Can I abstain?
That's right, you abstain.
Yeah, I abstain.
Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Yeah.
And now we have to go back to the main.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda minus 10.2.4.
Second.
All right, any questions about the or comments about the consent agenda?
Um. Yes. But I have all, I have lots of arrows. Um. Oh, on the painting of Petaluma Junior High, this is for Chris, I think. Um, it mentioned that that one of the reasons that they were going to do the the painting was that that students would not be on campus and so there would be no disruption. So I was just wondering if, because we'll be going back by April 12th or on April 12th, or actually April 19th, I guess, for the junior high, is that going to impact the contract at all? Or are they just going to continue, it'll just be pushed back or not, or just they'll just continue to do it? Since it, students won't be there full-time, I was just wondering.
It should be completed by time students get back. It shouldn't take more than two or three weeks, yeah.
Oh, oh, perfect.
Yeah, no, it'll be, it'll be done by then. That's why we're doing it as early as we're doing it and we're picking up all the remaining buildings. Yeah, there might be some minor punch list items. No, if we're not completely finished, but it'll be minor in nature. So we anticipate, if not being completely finished, having just minor items to complete.
Thank you.
I guess I have a question on 10.2.3, following up on Joe's question. Just if we know if these are local and union folks, um, because SPUR seems, from my understanding, almost like an intermediary. I don't know if Chris or David can speak to that.
SPUR has a state contract and so we're piggybacking onto the state contract to do this work. I don't know if David, I'm assuming David's here, I can't see him.
Yes, I mean.
So I don't know, David, if you want to comment on that, but.
Yeah, so we're, we're doing this under the the E-Rate Program and um, AMS was awarded the SPUR contract for this kind of work under the E-Rate Program. And so procedurally, it was recommended by our consultant to proceed in this way to take care of this, that we could take advantage of the 60% discount that's offered through the E-Rate Program for these projects. These are necessary projects that um, needed to occur regardless. And it was pointed out to us that we could, we could utilize this, this contract and this process to access the 60% federal subsidy for the replacement. That as far as I know, the contractors are are going to be paid prevailing wages. And I don't know to what degree AMS utilizes any local contractors or not.
Well, thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, I assume if the state contracted their unionized folks, just based on how state and local governments operate.
You know, they they may or may not be unionized, but they definitely have to pay prevailing wage. So prevailing wages will be paid either way. But David's right, in order to participate in the E-Rate Program, we're obligated to follow a certain process and use various project contractors and contracts.
Thank you both.
Anything else? All right. All in favor?
I.
I opposed. Abstain. All right, moving on to comments from the public on action items.
We will open the chat for comments on the 12, actually the action I am there on number 12s. Think we can close the the chat for action items?
Okay, um, let's start with Amy Fadaji.
Good evening. My name is Amy Fadaji and I am the principal of Pengrove Elementary. On behalf of our elementary principal team, I want to congratulate Matthew Harris on becoming our next Petaluma City Schools Superintendent. We are so excited to have Mr. Harris's leadership in Petaluma. As we know, candidates the caliber of Mr. Harris are highly sought after and commonly recruited to other districts. We are so fortunate that Mr. Harris has chosen to remain with Petaluma City Schools, the place he has poured his heart and soul into for the last nine years. I feel honored to continue serving for our PCS community under Mr. Harris's leadership. I cannot think of a better person to serve as our next superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy, and up next, we have Joe.
Okay, I'm back. My name is Joe Tremaine and I represent IVW 551 Electrical Workers here in Sonoma County. I'm speaking tonight in strong support of the memorandum of understanding between Petaluma City Schools and Scale Microgrid Solutions with W. Bradley Electric as their subcontractor. This partnership means a lot to the local community because it fulfills a list of pretty important criteria. The first of which is local hire, having local residents working on local projects, you know, represents a level of accountability that's unparalleled, quite frankly. The fact that local skilled and trained electricians and electrical apprentices from state-approved apprenticeship would be working on this and other projects is paramount. The local state-certified electricians and their apprentices will ensure that the project will be delivered professionally and safely, while also ensuring that these workers are being paid prevailing wage, enabling them to live and work in our local communities. This is an important step, making our local green jobs into good jobs that support our local community, you know, with better pay and just keeping our money in in the community. Thanks again, have a great evening.
Thank you, Joe. And up next, we have John.
Hello again, boards, and sorry to keep you here a little longer to hear my beautiful Irish voice chatting with you. I also agree with what Joe was saying there, that young man, Joe. It is wonderful opportunity now that Petaluma City Schools has for graduates of Petaluma High Schools because the apprenticeship programs that are local here, what we need is opportunity, work opportunities. So if there's work opportunities, we can bring more young folk into the apprenticeship programs and put them to work and allow them to live here, work here, have their families grow up here and, uh, you know, pay into the community here. And that's what pushes the agenda here for everybody, we believe. It's also, um, you know, just, just a wonderful thing to have the community just sprouting up around itself, basically. You know, so when our kids are leaving high school with an opportunity to go to work, that's, that's, that's critical today for hope, for opportunity. Recently, we heard the superintendent of Sonoma County Schools say that the juniors and seniors of our today, that's the the kids who are graduating high school today and next year, don't see the 70% of them, do not see themselves living here, having a sustainable life here in Sonoma County, unfortunately. And there has to be opportunity to go along with hope and opportunity for the kids. So we believe, again, this kind of opportunity is just wonderful. We appreciate and support the MO units on the table. W. Bradley Electric has workers who live in Petaluma, they're, they're, uh, workers have gone through the Petaluma Schools. And it would be wonderful to have them working on these schools and other schools in the county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. All right, and with that, that's the end of the public comments on the action items. Um, all right, so moving on to action item 12.1, administration slash human resources, appointment of superintendent. Does anyone have?
Well, I think it sounds like all of our attendees know what we intend to do. Um, I, if y'all haven't read our statement, I would encourage you all, read it. Um, but I think I can say on behalf of all five of us on the board, we're really excited to have the opportunity to vote on this appointment of Matthew Harris to be our superintendent.
Was that a move?
I move to approve this item. Appointment.
12.1.1.
Yeah, that one.
I'll second.
I second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
I opposed. All right, congratulations, Mr. Harris.
Can I just say that I'm, 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 that I'm really, um, I kept coming back to this moment in time and um, and that you really, you I am voting for you because of who you are. And because I really do feel, as as Caitlin said in this and and other people in this statement, that, you know, if we went out looking for somebody, it would be you. But I also want to just say that you've been through the past year with us. And the past year has been traumatic and challenging for everybody. No one has escaped this pandemic. Um, and, you know, you're part of the community. You, you have your children here, your family's here, your work's here. You went through all of that and all those different levels. To think of anybody else coming in here and being able to do that and and do it as well as you've done. You've shown incredible leadership over and over and over again, just last week with the vaccinations. You know, really getting your team together, Brian and Michelle and everybody else to get our teachers vaccinated and and doing it like, uh, you know, like overtime. And it just shows your commitment to our community, to our kids, to our, to our staff and our teachers, to everybody. And um, so I'm, I'm really happy about this and I wanted to make sure people knew that.
I just wanted to add that for anyone in the audience who doesn't know, Ellen had to excuse herself.
Yeah.
But that is not indicative of how she feels about this appointment. I can guarantee here it would be a five zero vote. So she's not hiding or avoiding this vote and she is very happy with this.
I think she was actually kept trying to stay in.
And two things.
Well, there she is.
One is I want to acknowledge and thank Gary. I mean, he's not gone yet and but I want to acknowledge what, um, you know, the work that he's done in our district and during his tenure. I I believe he is, he is leaving this district in a, in the position of strength, uh, in a better place than when starting. And and we were thinking of ways to send you off in style. And for Matthew, particularly for the members of the public who, you know, uh, did not see the behind-the-scenes process, it may look like, you know, did we even try? And believe me, we looked at everything. Our first uh, uh, instinct as a board was, do we have people within ourselves who we think could do a great job? And the reality is, we have multiple people who could. And so we considered every individual there. And then we asked ourselves, do we need to go out to expand the pool? And our answer was, no, we don't, we have the people here. And I think that's also a testament to what Gary has built here. And so I'm, we're all thrilled about this move. And we're, we're happy about where this is going to take Petaluma City Schools.
Thank you, Sheldon.
Great, like, yeah, this is definitely bittersweet. Gary, you're really going to be missed, like, really. And I'm really grateful, Matthew, that you're willing to stay for two of the pandemic. Um, yeah. But, I mean, look at all of these people right here. Like, last week's Q and A, I was so impressed by our district staff, like unbelievable, as well as Nikki and Linda and the principals that you had on, like, Gary, you built a really great team. And I just want to acknowledge everyone here.
Thank you, well, thank you for those kind words. It's really such an honor. I like, look forward to collaborating and hearing from all of our stakeholders over here on this call. We have, you know, these nine years in this, in this district, it's been a labor of love. And we have such a hard-working, fantastic, classified staff, certificated staff, administrative team, you hit on that, strong union partnerships, our amazing students and families and community members and organizations. Eager to continue the board's vision of a district where students and families have choice and where every student receives an excellent education. Want to thank the board for putting their faith in me. You won't be disappointed. I'm appreciative to have Gary here for a few more months as a mentor and this strong team that he's put in place over the past six years to to continue some really great work. Thank you for the opportunity, I'm excited to to dig into the new role, um, starting the summer.
Gary, any last?
Just starting, I would just. I would amend what he said, starting tomorrow, but the summer, but.
That's what I was.
You know, uh, I have so much I could. You know, I have so much I could say. I'm going to, I'm gonna wait. This one is, this is, this is Matthew's, this is Matthew's day. And we're gonna make sure that everyone is positioned for to put 2020, 2021 in the shelves and really move forward with an amazing 2021, 22 year, and it starts right now. So congrats, Matt.
All right, moving on to 12.1.3. Wait, did we do 12.1.2? Did we do that? No?
Yes, you need to do 12.1.2 ratification of the employment agreement.
I moved to approve this ratification, otherwise the appointment kind of doesn't mean anything.
True.
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? All right, again, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, so moving on to 12. 12.1.3. Approval of the tentative agreement to the collective bargaining agreement between Petaluma City Schools and PFT.
So so great, great news on this one. I want to thank the negotiating teams on both sides. Recognize and appreciate the collegial and positive tenor at the table and our quick work this year. The recommended motion for this is to approve the tentative agreement between the between Petaluma City Schools and Petaluma Federation of Teachers with the attached salary schedules.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
I'm I'm thrilled that we're able to do this in a year where we got a zero call from the state.
Yeah.
That's testing to fiscal management in our district, and so I'm really pleased we can do this.
Yeah.
Good job, Chris.
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad we could give something to the teachers, so.
Yeah, teachers have been amazing this.
They've been amazing.
Yeah.
They have been hard at work. They're not just sitting at home in their PJs.
All right, so.
Move, we do, is it already moved? I can't remember. We haven't moved.
We haven't moved it.
Move to approve item 12.1.3.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? All right, wonderful. Moving on to 12.1.4.
So this this resolution is the particular kinds of service layoffs. Essentially, we we meet with our team, we meet with secondary principals, and we review where where our incoming students are signing up. We look at any potential declining enrollment, the need for flexibility with our secondary master schedules, flexibility with alternative and charter programs, and the elimination of any any elimination of categorical funds. Because of all of those factors, we meet with our principals and we talk through what sections may need preliminarily need to be reduced at this time. It gives them a chance to really build a master schedule that meets the needs of students and families. So because of that, we're recommending the elimination, the the preliminary elimination of it's a 10.4 FTE for 2122. Of course, we can always bring more FTE back as this as needed, depending depending on student interest.
A move to approve resolution 2021-22.
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Okay, moving on, 12.2.1. MOU between Petaluma City Schools and Scale Micro Grid Solutions. Believe this is you, Chris?
Yep. So you kind of heard a little bit earlier from the last speaker, but we have spent the last two months exploring opportunities to do battery backup at several of our campuses, including the two comprehensive high school, the two comprehensive junior high, the district office transportation, and McKinley Elementary School. So part of that work has included us evaluating all of the electrical grids that currently exist at all the campuses to determine the level of viability to actually install install a microgrid with battery backup that would connect to the solar systems and to determine the cost of potentially doing that versus the actual savings that the district would realize at each campus. So we looked at it at both an individual-by-individual campus level, and we also looked at it at a macro level, combining all of them into one. And part of why that was necessary is because we also were trying to act swiftly in trying to take advantage of the S chip grants that are available through PGME, S chip being the energy grants that are quickly running out as in terms of dollars available to do these types of projects. So, for example, we know that our eligibility was roughly $1.3 million. We just found out that on Monday or Friday, I'm not sure, I think maybe Friday evening, the rate went from a .35 grant to a .30 grant, and we immediately lost about 260,000 eligibility overnight. So that's why we're pushing so hard to kind of get these projects in the works. Based on our evaluation of kind of a feasibility study, if you will, of those campuses, we determined that doing Petaluma High School, Casa Grande High School, and Petaluma Junior High School were really the three most viable options for campuses. There are various reasons. I put some of that in the report. You might think, well, why not Calwerd Junior High? That's a fairly large campus. The challenge is, we know we have an older existing solar system that is roughly circa 2004, 2005. That is a very old system. We know it's actually, we're trying to address issues that it's causing on our roof, and we know that we are going to potentially have to replace that system at some point in the near future. In addition to that, we have mechanical units and mechanical unit project going in where we're replacing existing flooring heat with new HVAC, which is going to dramatically change the electrical loads on the campus. It's very difficult to determine what kind of, how to size a system when we're doing those projects over the next couple of years. So we looked at it from the long-term and the short-term perspective. So before you is an MOU, we we held a request for qualifications process. You heard from the earlier speaker that we were able to send that RFP out to some of our local trades contractors. And we felt very fortunate that we were able to get interest at a level that they actually are being able to participate. As you know, we have to, we're obligated to follow a particular procurement process. And it was very successful in this case. So this is not the contract for the battery backup. This is actually an MOU for this vendor to actually start for scale to start the application process for the S chip funds. They're going to immediately start that tomorrow so that we can get in to S chip and and get as much of that funding as we can. Simultaneously, we'll be entering into to contract negotiations with scale to then do the greater battery project. I've given you estimates, cost estimates here of what we think the the preliminary estimates are on, but those are based on conceptual designs. So we knew know those cost estimates are a little bit of a moving target. We anticipate using general obligation funds to be able to support this project in addition to the S chip. Under the umbrella of solar, this is a perfect marriage of that project. So remember, our bonds are under Prop 39, and so we're obligated to follow the projects that were called out in Prop 39. And part of those projects were for solar PV. What else can I tell you? We're super excited about doing this. I know it probably doesn't show. I'm a little bit tired. But we are super excited about moving forward with this project. We really think that this is going to help us continue to move into a greener energy modality for our facilities. I would also say that we consider this phase one of the battery backup project because we believe it's going to be important for us to move forward with phase two, capturing Calwerd, capturing the transportation yard, because, as you know, we're getting electric buses, and we're currently in talks with PGME to install and upgrade the switchgear and to apply for a grant, a PGME grant, to pay for those new bus charging stations. So and then also, Petaluma High School, full disclosure here, we're hoping to size the batteries to support the majority of the schools. So in other words, we put a battery in, we have a power outage. The battery in conjunction with the solar energy that's being generated would support the majority of the schools. We might have to shut down some systems to preserve battery, but that's the hope. Petaluma High School, it's impossible to do that at this point because they have two very different main electrical feeds, one coming from the north over by the pool and one coming in from the south behind the museum building. It's the southernmost, the southern main electrical feed where the solar is connected, and that supports all of the large building, building AC, ABC wing admin supports the two brand-new buildings, the science wing, the art wing. All of those are supported, but unfortunately, the buildings to the north, the gymnasium, career tech ed, building D, the pool building, those are all supported from a very different switchgear that's not connected to the solar. So it would not be connected to the battery. So if we have a power outage and we have the new battery, those buildings won't be supported by the battery backup. So we believe phase two then could look at, could contemplate additional solar arrays, perhaps back behind the gym, perhaps back in that old basketball court area where we could also do battery backup and then capture those buildings as well. So we really see this as phase one. And then we would, over the next 12 to 18 months, start thinking about design for phase two, which also would capture solar potentially at Petaluma High School and solar replacement at Calwerd. So that's kind of what I know. Any questions?
This is super exciting, Chris. I'm with you. The sizing of the batteries that you just mentioned, you know, in the descriptions, it talks about the capacity for for critical infrastructure, fire safety, interior lighting, those kind of things. In in your estimation, are these capacities enough for a school to run instruction during a power outage or not that?
You know, it it's a great question, and that's clearly what we were looking at. But what we found during our electrical analysis of the existing electrical grid or the electrical infrastructure is that the electrical systems, and remember, these are old high schools, Petaluma High School, Petaluma Junior High, these are old, old facilities. I, Caitlin, I hate to say it, Casa, it's getting old. I hate to say that because I was there in the first, I hate, do I say, dare I say, 10 years of its existence? So it was constructed in 72. I want to assure everybody I was not there in 72. But but because Petaluma High and Petaluma Junior High are much older, it's really hard to isolate actual systems versus buildings because of the way these were designed. And so what we found in our analysis is that that the batteries or backups are going to support buildings
I see.
as opposed to specific systems. To answer your question more precisely, yes, we believe with these battery backups, we would be able to continue to operate school. Certainly at Casa and Petaluma Junior High School, we also will be able to preserve the food in the refrigeration units and the freezer units. We, I think the year before I got here, they had a power outage at the warehouse, and we lost $50,000 worth of food. So I mean, the the food costs are extraordinarily large. I don't want to understate that, especially at Petaluma Junior High. So that was one of the main things that we targeted, and that's how we're eligible for the S chip is that we can actually, that actually helps show our savings when we look at these projects. At Petaluma High School, it would become challenging because it will only support half the school. And that's where we would want to see that phase two capturing the other half of the school. So hopefully that answered your question.
Yeah.
We certainly wanted to target critical infrastructure like fire alarm, you know, security and you know, data, that type of thing. But ultimately, it's going to power various buildings. Other questions? We have learned a ton about our
I know.
I can tell you that.
I have.
And I I've looked in places that I don't, I don't know that I ever want to look again. There there were definitely, let's just say, critters, evidence of critters. There was, there was a couple squeals of people that I was with when things jumped out that we weren't really sure what was jumping out of this. So but we have learned a lot about our our electrical grids, so.
Well, I have a little note here that says, I am learning so much. I read all of your descriptions, and it's just fascinating. I can't say that I'm totally understanding all of it, but, you know, it it really is. It's so complex, and I I thank you for pursuing it and understanding it and getting it done.
Well, I'd also like to acknowledge Terra Verde, our partners, because they really
Yeah.
instrumental in assisting us in going through this process. They've been super patient as we've, you know, worked hard to try to get them the 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 details and the information they needed to do this analysis. So I just want to acknowledge Terra Verde. They've been a strong partner of ours really since 2009, 10, so, but thank you.
Yeah, it's all, it's all very exciting, and I wanted to echo what some of our public speakers said about W Bradley Electric. I know they support our nonprofits a lot, and it sounds like they employ all the people we want them to employ. So it's really exciting to see all these things kind of coming together to benefit us all.
We've had nothing but good results when we have hired locally for big projects.
A move to approve the memorandum of understanding with Micro Grid Solutions.
Second.
All in favor? I opposed. Okay, moving on to 12.2.2. This is also Chris Thomas.
So we have, it might not be as exciting as the electrical project or the battery project, but I think Amy Fadji, who spoke earlier, will agree that it is very exciting for the Pengrove community for us to be able to work on a redesign and some improvements to their lower parking lot. Their their entryway to that parking lot is about 22 feet, which is two feet shorter than what code would require. This is going to expand it even more. For those of you who have pulled into that lower parking lot, we have a hard time getting large school buses in because it bottoms out on that very, that's going to get, that's going to get sloped out so that it won't be such a steep entryway. And we're expanding almost the entire circumference of the parking lot to create a much greater drop-off. Reconfigure the parking so that we try to preserve the parking while we're doing that. And then also includes an AD accessible ramp from the basement that we've done a lot of improvements on up to the admins that will be able to have a more AD accessible admin building and campus ultimately. So but the parking improvements from a security perspective, if you can imagine, there is no street parking for Pengrove.
Right.
And what happens is because that's such a narrow pinch point of an end of an ingress egress is that cars were getting backed up onto Old Adobe, and and that created a very significant safety concern. So we're super excited. This isn't going to resolve all the issues. Clearly, it's very hard to resolve every traffic issue on any campus. But I think that this is going to create a tremendous improvement. And we're also, part of this resolution is to allow us to move forward with the project that bids later this week so that we can get the majority of it done over spring break. Because with the opening now announced of April 12, we now have, we have to get that parking lot open for the start of school. So so anyway, that's, this is one way that we can do that, and the ed code allows for it. So thank you.
You know, I have to say that we had an office hours, gosh, you know, well over a year ago at Pengrove. And we had a few people, and every single person who came by when when, you know, we were just asking, what's the issue that you'd like to talk about? And everybody said the parking lot. So I, you know, it's great that, you know, you've been able to do this again. I hope that it, I hope that it works.
Yeah, I mean, this is one of the campuses where we can't encourage walking or biking. Well, like, we, I would gather that probably 1% or less try and walk to walk to Pengrove, so. It's exciting that it'll be a lot safer for all of our littles and their families.
I would say that the one year I lived in Pengrove, my daughter attended Pengrove Elementary in sixth grade, she walked to school. So I will say that
Yeah.
she did walk to, she did walk to school, but it probably was not an easy crossing. So anyway.
Well, then I'm to approve 12.2.1. Point 2.2.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on, 12.2.3, Chris Thomas again.
I think I've probably spoken enough on this topic, so.
I move to approve. The budget revision number one and second interim report for 202021.
Revision number three.
Yeah. Oh, is that, what did I say?
Number one.
Sorry, revision. I'm sorry, revision number three and second interim report. One of these days you have to explain to me why it's revision number three on a second interim, but.
Because the interim is after the first, so it's the second interim, the first is number one.
I know, but why have a revision number three?
I'll never.
It's actually because we actually bring them, it's the third we revision we brought to you. So they're in numeric order. So the first one came in August.
We usually, yeah, oh, okay, nevermind. Anyway, that's my motion.
No, but you're right, you're right, it usually is budget revision number two and second interim, but it's.
Okay, thank you.
Tied to the number, yes.
That wasn't crazy, geez.
You're not crazy, no, no.
I'm crazy, so it's fine. I second. Whenever we, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to comments from the public on discussion slash information items.
The chat is open.
I think we can close the chat.
Okay, we have any comments on these items? Matthew, I think this is you, right? 14.1. William settlement.
Yeah, so this is. A letter from Southern County Office of Education about the, any findings that they had from our Williams visit this year. They look at sufficient standards aligned instructional materials, they look at facilities condition. And they look at whether we provide accurate data on the annual school economy, school, school accountability report card. And their findings below were that each pupil had standards aligned textbooks. The facilities were clean, safe and functional and we had no assignments in our teaching staff. That was for the Williams visit to McKinley Elementary School.
Great.
All right, yeah, it's good. All right, 14.2, educational services, is that you, Mr. DeGraw?
He wants to do something first.
He's going to do the school reopening on, as it relates to secondary. And just kind of update the group on that, but a couple other items related to this, real, just real fast. Vaccinations are moving as. As, as we had hoped. We believe that the great majority of our folks have already received their first dose. The few that haven't have appointments this week. We think that will lead to most of our, our folks being vaccinated with the, the two trials. Prior to return to school. We're working through issues related to athletics and cheerleading. Been inundated with those issues, very frustrating. All, all I will say on that item is that the state has. Created a series of guidance related to that. And whenever there's pushback on that guidance, whether that be at the state level or at the local level. They immediately defer it back to the school district to solve now. So I will have to step in tomorrow and, and resolve some issues related to athletics and cheerleading. Even though we had no say in either one of those items up until now. But the idea is it's, we want to make sure that our kids have every opportunity to participate safely. The number one thing that we heard obviously at our, at the, the secondary meeting and as well at our Q and A last week. Was from our advanced placement students, students. We also had concerns about students that are in study skills classes, special ed, as well as our EL. Students at the secondary level, the way, the nature of the. The actual schedule made it difficult for them to get continuity of service. And so Cliff's going to update you as we had. Said, I think I said four times it, the Q and A, that we would be coming back with a plan to mitigate this. We're coming back with a plan to mitigate this and so. I hope that those students are on right now to listen to that because we heard them loud and clear.
Yeah, I see a few of them, but I'm sure there's going to be more tomorrow night. So yeah, so just to, just to rewind a little bit of where this all came down last week. So our, our committee met last Tuesday to finalize our plan. Under the guidance we had been given to that point, we had a plan that we liked. And then Wednesday morning, SCO and County Public Health held a joint webinar. And lowered the boom and added some additional guidance that had not been part of our planning. Which was secondary students should only be a part of three stable groups at maximum at school, one extracurricular group. And that those groups should remain together, they should remain static for three weeks. So that's what threw us in a spin Wednesday last week. So between the morning and the webinar that night. You know, we had to revert back to kind of a prior option, which. Was the three and a half weeks of A days followed by three and a half weeks of B days, that meant the guidance. But as Gary mentioned, there was. You know, that schedule presented some issues, you do have gaps where there's, you know, not support. Now, I will say there are schools out there that follow a schedule like this on a normal basis. They, they switch classes every quarter. However, what made this more problematic is the timing. So because it's going to be the last seven weeks. If, if you have first period, I'm sorry, if you have an AP class, for example, on, on an A day for second or third. You have your class right up until the tests. Or depending on your test window, you have your class and then you've got a four or five week gap before your tests. Or if you had an AP class in four, five and six. You don't have your class or three and a half weeks and then there's the test. So it was problematic in a number of ways because of the timing, so. We had begun to think about some ways to mitigate it and then on Friday, one of our Pedlema High teachers, Cliff Eblin. Came forward with an idea that he thought would meet the compliance. And allow us to keep access with all six classes. So we threw that around on Friday. Tried to poke holes in it, shared it around with some of the committee members, talked to some AP teachers. Talked to some, some site admin. And ultimately we called a, we called a meeting for today. With our committee to touch base again and reconsider this new option. So I'm just going to, I'm just going to credit Cliff, I'm just going to say Cliff came up with it. I'm just going to say that, but he did, he did, we're glad he shared his idea. So I'm going to share my screen and show you what it looks like. So just as a reminder. Can you guys see this, which says current hybrid schedule? So this was the schedule, three and a half weeks of A days, kids come on different days. Everyone stays home on Wednesday for distance learning and then they switch. So that's the one I was referring to that was problematic. And then the one that we. Settled on today, looks like this. So the idea is if students, you know, we're going to, we're going to divide students up into two groups. Of the students who want to return in person, we're going to divide them into two groups. And we're going to call those learning team one and learning team two. And we're going to figure out how to divide them, maybe it's alphabetical, we'll figure that out, but. So this looks similar, but what's different is for the first half of the, of the weeks when we return. Learning team one students come in person on Mondays and Thursdays and they happen to be A days. So for the first half of the schedule, they only come in person on A days. On B days, they stay home and they zoom into the classroom with their classmates. Learning team two only comes on B days. So in that case, in this case, it's, it's Tuesday and Friday. And then they zoom in on A days with their classmates. So that way, each of those groups has a maximum of three stable groups, three periods. They never switch, they never mix. Wednesdays, we decided on distance learning all periods that day. And we need to iron out a schedule, like how many minutes those will be. We looked at an asynchronous day, we looked at just continuing our A and B rotation and not doing any. Asynchronous or distance learning Wednesdays. Ultimately, we liked the consistency that this. This schedule gives families, so if you're a learning team one student, you always come on Mondays and Thursdays. If you're learning team two, you always come on Tuesdays and Fridays. And similar to the elementary schools. It's a distance learning Wednesday, so families wouldn't have to bring secondary kids while the elementary kids stay home. So we liked it for its consistency. This also allows students to have access to all six of their classes the whole time. To have an even number of A days and B days and to have an even number of days in person. What's not totally clear here, but at the midway point. Team one that was attending on A days, we switch A and B days. So if you look at May 10th, for example, May 10th is a B day. So from that point on, learning team one students are attending in person on B days. And the learning team two attend on A days. So at the midpoint, we switch, we keep the days of the week the same for kids coming, we just switch the A and the B. So that both groups have access to both A days and B days in person for the same amount of time. We're still trying to figure out exactly how we want to handle finals. So the midpoint may change, it may be May 10th, it might be May 12th. We may not need four days to do finals, so. We're going to meet again as a committee and iron out what we want to do for finals and what we want to do. For that Wednesday schedule. But. Quite, quite a simple solution, just a small switch to our plan. But it allows kids to keep all their classes. To still come on certain days. But to be able to get to all six and not have to have a gap where they don't have access to all their classes.
Is Wednesday all six classes?
Wednesday is all six, all six of distance learning. We, we talked about an asynchronous day, but we didn't like the fact that then we wouldn't have any. Contact at all. It's just like you assign work and, but we liked having a direct live interaction. We've been talking about how long to make those periods so that it's a meaningful interaction, but it's all six classes. So every week. Whether you're on learning team one or two, you attend in person on two days, the same two days. And there's three days of distance learning from home. And it's the same the whole time.
What about zero period?
So zero period is distance learning only and it meets on A days only. So that was another piece, the, the county, we specifically asked about. Does zero period count towards the stable groups? And they said yes. So if you have a student with a full schedule, they can't attend in person zero period and the rest of their courses. So by default, zero period had to be distance learning. So that's the gist of it.
So it's, go ahead.
No, no, no.
I was just, it, it's a. The beauty of, of it is it's, it's simplicity and it, it solves a significant issue. It's not perfect by any means, but it's a, it's a really, really good. Model that still holds true to what the recommendations were.
So Cliff, does the schedule, the daily schedule remain hour classes and then they're, they're, and then they're gone by 12:15?
Yeah, so that distance learning schedule remains, it's the same.
Good.
8:45 to 12:15, hour long classes, 15 minute break in between. And then knowing, you know, we kind of shared this out a little bit over the weekend with our group and we're getting good feedback. So knowing this was probably coming. We put out a kind of save the date last night for families to tune in again tomorrow for yet another Cliff DeGraw webinar. So he could update them and we felt like, you know, there was still time to course correct, it made the most sense. So we paused the surveys as of last night. And we will resurvey families and give them another week to respond before we gather the results, so. Maybe the, you know, maybe the results will change a little bit, we didn't have complete results because I stopped it midway, but. So I'm sure we're going to have a bunch of folks tuning in tomorrow. You know, and there's still going to be folks that have issues with. You know, the schedule, it doesn't, it doesn't solve everything and it brings up other issues. But it seems to resolve the biggest issues we were looking at last week and it still complies with the guidance. So that was great and we, and just so, you know, we did look at. We looked at four or five different versions of a schedule like this today. And different rotations and different iterations. We liked this one because it was the same for families. Because there was another version where three weeks in, the kids who were going Monday, Tuesday, Monday, Thursday would then go. Tuesday, Friday, but then we're like, you know, that's, that might be too confusing for families to switch. You know, and they might be planning daycare and transportation, things like that, so we felt like if we could keep it. Consistent, that was better.
So the plan again is, you know, to, we're, because we're, we're running out of time. To really do the planning on this. Is to get that communication out tomorrow, let people really chew through it and then give them an opportunity again to. To determine what they want to do, whether they're coming back in the, in the hybrid or whether they're going to stay at full distance learning. So then we can, we can plan accordingly.
So we're going to put this, yeah, we're going to put this survey out for one week, so from Wednesday to Wednesday. That gives us a week and a half before spring break to crunch numbers, to get anyone who didn't submit one. And then start to divide our, our learning teams.
I really appreciate the flexibility and, you know. The, you know, to hear the feedback and I'm sure, I know you're negotiating between ever moving state and county mandates. With, you know, all kinds of student circumstances, family needs, faculty needs. So anyway, I really appreciate your willingness to. To, like you said, course correct is, you know, we can always do things better and when we think together like this, we can find better solutions. Thank you.
I agree, Sheldon, thank you for, I mean, I know you worked through the weekend on this, so appreciate that.
Totally agree, I think we should. I know, I think we should send him cookies.
Yeah, thanks to the other Cliff, Mr. Ebel.
Maybe both Cliff.
Two great Cliffs, maybe more, what do I know?
Just got to make sure you. You got to make sure you spell his last name right, I was, I was spelling it wrong when I was giving him props, so. As someone who gets, gets their last name mixed up a lot, you know, I felt, I felt bad.
So tomorrow at 6:30, right, for parents?
Yeah, 6:30, 7:30. Yeah, it shouldn't take too long to go through the change and explain it, but I'm sure we're going to have questions, so we'll stay on. Answer as many as we can.
Jason will be there, right?
Sidekick Jason, that's right.
Get it on the road.
That would conclude our update for tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
All right, moving on to future business, well before midnight this time.
The board is looking at a study session on May 8th, it's Saturday, to discuss. Concepts related to dual immersion. We'll provide more information about that. Out to the community as we get closer and we, like, well, we'll have our staff identify the individuals that. Need to be there to participate. In that. Works, we're exploring whether that can be done in some sort of in-person setting. That will also kind of, will kind of play that one by ear. But we'll look at some, some options, it would really, what, 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 the only thing that makes it difficult is we don't know. But we'll look at some, some options. It would really, what, 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 the only thing that makes it difficult is we don't know numbers. And that's what makes that tricky. When we don't want to get in a situation where we're turning people away. So we'll have to look at what options we have, but we're, but the data set for the eighth, May 8th, from nine to 12.
Great.
Can I?
Go ahead, Sheldon.
So, you know, with the school reopening and, and that special session in mind, are we expecting any guidance from the county on graduation and, or should we propose something?
We're going to get some guidance. It's going to come probably really late. We're, we're, we're looking at following basically the same guidance that we're looking at for athletics. And we're in meetings right now with some vendors on some potential options related to, to, like for example, simulcasting, graduation. You know, it's our goal to get students on turf for their ceremony. It's our goal, if it's possible, to get some family on, on state, on facility, but we know we can't get everybody. So we want to have a plan for, for access and that's, we actually have a meeting tomorrow with the high school principals and to go over, or hopefully have something more concrete. Well, I know we'll have something more concrete to share at our next, at our April board meeting.
Yeah.
I think we have to report out on closed item attendance, aren't we?
Yeah.
Let's skip, sorry.
Yes. So we are reporting out, let me move up to the top. We are reporting out on resolution Resolution Board of Education, Pedaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School, notification of possible non-reemployment, reassignment of a certified administrative employee. And that resolution was approved to 5-0 with trustee Quinn moving and seconded by trustee Webster. We're also reporting out on 3.8, 2021, 21 Resolution Board of Education, notification of possible non-reemployment, reassignment of certified administrative employees for the 21, 22 school year. And that also passed five, nothing, trustee Quinn made the motion and trustee Jen seconded it. Those are the two that we needed to report out.
Great, what about 3.6, Gary?
Oh. All right. 20, 3.6, 2021-19 Resolution was approved. It's a 2.0 certificate, it is employee release. And the vote on that was five, nothing. It was moved by trustee Webster and it was seconded by trustee Pond. And with that, we beat 9:30.
Wow, all right. Thank you, everyone. Cliff and Jason, we'll see you tomorrow.
I hope you all get a chance to have some kind of spring break. Thank you, everybody, participants for coming to these meetings. And, but I hope you all get some rest. You guys have been working really, really hard, all of you, so. Enjoy it.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, meeting adjourned.